Good afternoon. I'd like to call the November 25, 2014 City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have a public comment. I have a speaker slip here in two minutes at the podium, and it's Phil Walker. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I had occasion a couple of weeks ago, weekends ago, to take a road trip up the Bay Area. My niece got married and everything went great, but, you know, if you fly, you just don't get the same perspective. And the Salinas area hasn't changed since I was a kid, and that's a long time ago. I call it T-Bone Alley between Soldad, Greenfield, and Chular, and it's scary even on a Saturday afternoon. Okay, on the way back, I decided I cut across Gilroy, my grandparents lived there for a time, and across the Pacheco Pass to the Five. And I stopped off at the San Luis Reservoir, the main north-south regulating reservoir on the California Aqueduct, where we also draw water out of it that we've purchased and state water if there is any. And I had a good half hour with the Department of Water Resources curator guide, and this gentleman has 40 years of service with the State of California Department of Water Resources, very informative. And I said, you know, I looked at the reservoir, it's down considerably, approximately 20% of capacity right now. And I said, well, what do you do when you're maybe 100-foot of elevation from not being able to discharge through the intake to the outlet works? And they also have the G and L power plant there, too, that generates power for the project. And he looked at me and he said, I guess to that point, we can't do what you did at Kachuma with the pumping barge. We'll have to shut down the regulating reservoir and just run directly out of the aqueduct. So there are serious concerns out there. And just driving over the Pacheco Pass, I saw very serious concern. It looked like it was oak trees, very little, just stubble on the hillsides, and it looked like a blowtorch was taken to it. So I did see some green, it was up at the Shandon area. I came back 41 to 46 there, and they got about two inches of rain when we got about an inch.
Do you mind that, please?
Okay. So serious concerns are out there, and, you know, plan for the D cell plant. I don't see the rain coming to the point where it's not going to be needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Shankman.
If my memory serves me correct, that 18 cubic acres of water spillage and runoff is being, you know, emitted every month. 50 cubic acre-feet of water, acre-feet of water, is what we go through every day. And the mayor astutely asked about the resources that could be involved to fix the runoff and the spillage. And the response from the Water Division is that there isn't enough resources. Now do the math on that. 18 cubic acre-feet of water per month. And during this crisis, do you really think that there isn't, that it would take more than 18 cubic acre-feet of water to fix it at any given time? And so this is part of what the public has to wonder when you apply against evaporation control, quote-unquote, when you're really dealing with runoff and spillage. And what we're going to do with the difference as it gets more stressful, how that water makes a difference for an entire population or neighborhood in one month. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, and there's some items to read.
Item two, adoption of ordinance to amend municipal code Title 16 Liquid and Industrial Waste Disposal, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the municipal code by repealing Title 16 in its entirety and adding Title 16 pertaining to liquid and industrial waste disposal. And item three, introduction of ordinance to amend municipal code to require the payment of prevailing wages on public works projects as defined by California Senate Bill 7, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to amend Municipal Code Section 452160 to require the payment of prevailing wages on public works projects as defined and required by California Senate Bill 7.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We do have a speaker slip for item number 10. Are there any other items to take out of the consent calendar? Okay, if you could read item number 10. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question on number nine.
Okay. All right, let's do number nine first, if you could read number nine.
Contract for construction of Santa Barbara Police Department Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Replacement Project.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you. I have been queried a couple of times on this, the large expense that's involved in this, and would like, would appreciate just even an email to the effect of what portion of that is dedicated to abating asbestos. I understand that's an issue, and I'm sure that contributes to the cost, but anyway, if we don't have it today, then perhaps we could at least get an email to the effect of what that, what portion of that is being spent on asbestos abatement.
Do you have an answer for that? Or you need to come to the mic, and if you could introduce yourself for the record, that would be great. And to us, actually. Hello.
Councilmembers, my name is Mike Wilchar. I'm a supervising engineer with facilities.
Thank you.
And I can answer that roughly right now. There is roughly 15 to 20% of that is to abate asbestos and handle logistics within the building.
A couple of hundred thousand dollars anyway of that cost is...
For logistics and asbestos abatement.
Great, okay, that's good enough.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great. Item 10, if you could read that.
Water main replacement program funding.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
You can call me Phil. That was my dad. He was an officer. I was enlisted. That's why I say Phil, not sir. You know, any money that can be spent on infrastructure upgrades, repairs, et cetera, et cetera, is great. The city of Santa Barbara hopefully will stay ahead of the curve as opposed to the DWP in LA. I just turned on the radio yesterday, another 12-inch line blew out in Benedict Canyon. And the effect it causes on disruption in people's lives besides not having a shower and traffic chaos is something to think about. And, you know, you're worried about the drought right now, and how are we going to get water, but we still got to get it to the tap. So thank you. Any money spent's good.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So move.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today and heard recommendations on adjustments, most of them totally routine to the budget, and in fact, we as a council just approved those recommended changes.
Yes, we did. Thank you. So item number 13.
Casa Esperanza Review of Operations.
Great, thank you. Ms. Gray.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Sue Gray, Community Development Business Manager. During the fiscal year 2015 budget process, Casa Esperanza came to council and requested additional funding for the operation of their restructured shelter program. Council approved and added $125,000 for fiscal year 15 and directed staff to distribute $60,000 of that upfront and to release the remaining $65,000 after a review of the shelter's operations was completed. Council also directed staff to complete the review, working with the county. The purpose of the review was to take an in-depth look at Casa Esperanza's current operations, their financial situation, and their budget to see if they are on par with other similar shelters and if their programs are sustainable for the future. Casa Esperanza currently has three agreements with the city. $51,000 is a community development block grant, $39,000 human services grant, and those two come through our CDBG human services allocation process. And then $202,100 of straight general fund money, $77,100 of that is for the winter shelter, which they receive on an annual basis. And then the extra is the $125,000. County and city staff work together to review the operations. The full review is attached to your council agenda report. The review includes an overview of their program, their finances, an overview of their debt and their restructure plan, their staffing, some shelter comparisons, challenges and opportunities, and our recommendations. Casa Esperanza is currently a sober-only shelter. They operate 100 beds year-round, and those increased to 200 beds from December through March. They're limited on the number of beds they can use by their conditional use permit. As of September 2013, they no longer have a day center and/or an open drop-in lunch They expect to serve approximately 850 unduplicated individuals. According to the three agreements that I mentioned before, their program outcomes are to place approximately 70 people in treatment facilities to help 70 individuals attain permanent housing, to assist 70 peoples with reunification with their families, to help 300 individuals obtain employment and/or benefits, and to help around 200 people to retain employment and/or benefits. Over a period of six years, Casa Esperanza borrowed a total of $2.5 million in order to pay for annual operating expenses for programs that were not adequately supported by grants or contributions. $2.1 million of that was from the Gilde Foundation. And in addition to their operating debt, they currently have just under $1 million that's owed on their building. $1 million was held by the city and the county, $500,000 each, and those were both forgiven in September per the agreements back in 1999. So their current building debt is just under $1 million. Casa ended 24, 20, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2014 with a slight excess, and that was after six years of operating at a deficit. In their fiscal year 2015 budget, to date, they have secured funding, 67% of their budget revenues are secured to date. Their fiscal year 15 revenues are derived from three main sources, 34% from foundations, 24% from contributions, and 42% from government. 13% under the government category are from the city general fund, 17% from the county, and 12% from the state. In July 2013, Casa Esperanza's Board of Directors formed a finance committee to craft a plan to stabilize its finances. They included two outside advisors to that group. One of them is Joseph Tumblr, who's here today. The committee developed and the board approved and implemented a three-part plan at that time. The first part was to raise enough money to meet their current expenses, mainly payroll. Their goal was $300,000. They actually raised $428,000. Their second goal was to develop a reasonable budget for fiscal year 2014 that included funding only from sources that they could reasonably expect to receive. To do that, they reduced their operating budget by approximately $1 million that year. That's when they closed the day center and the drop-in lunch program. They also reduced their staffing, and they reduced the salaries for the staff that remained. The third part of the plan was to restructure their balance sheet or their debt. They negotiated a debt reduction plan with their lenders, the Gilde Foundation being the largest. They forgave $1.1 million in principal and interest and also reduced the interest on the remaining $1.154 million from 5% to 3% on a fully amortized 10-year loan. The foundation also agreed to donate $75,000 per year for 10 years to help offset the interest and principal payments of the remaining loan. They had some other foundation debt totaling almost $400,000. Those have also been restructured to be fully amortized 10-year loans as well. And they plan to refinance their mortgage in order to reduce their monthly expense. In March 2014, Casa Esperanza laid off their top two management positions. This was in addition to the cuts they made in 2013. Since that time, they've been operating under two separate interim directors, and as I mentioned earlier, currently it's Joe Tumblr. They recently hired a new managing director, Jessica Wishen, who is also here today. And in addition to Jessica, Casa employs 14 full-time and eight part-time employees. The review includes a real basic comparison of four other shelters. It's difficult to find comparable shelters because of the many models that are out there, and they all have a variety of ancillary programs that are provided in addition to just shelter. The four shelters were chosen based upon the county population that they resided in, the number of beds they had, and that we picked those that served individuals rather than just families. The shelters that were chosen come from the following counties: Santa Cruz, Solano, Placer, and Sonoma County. So our, the full review includes a more detailed comparison data on the four shelters and Casa Esperanza. I'm including only two of them in my presentation, the percent of government funding and the nightly bed rates. As you can see from this slide, Casa Esperanza receives a higher percentage of total government support, that's the green, tallest green bar, than three of the comparison shelters and slightly less than the one in Santa Cruz. For fiscal year 2015, Casa receives more local government support, city-county general fund, than any of the other four. I want to mention here, though, that the numbers for Casa include the extra funding of $245,000, the $125 from the city and the $120,000 from the county. Without the extra funding, and if we reduce the related expenses that go with that funding, the percentages change. They would be 33% total government, 20% from local general fund, and 13 federal state, which is more in line with Santa Cruz and Sonoma. With that, if we took out the extra funding but kept their full budget, for instance, if they were able to fundraise the difference, the budget would be, it would actually mirror Sonoma pretty much exactly. It would be 29% total government, 17 local general fund, and 12% federal and state. This slide shows the bed rate that we calculated. As you can see, Casa's bed rate is in line with four of the five comparison shelters. And I just wanted to let you know, there's, there are many ways to calculate bed night costs. It really depends on the type of service associated with the bed and those ancillary programs I was talking about earlier. For this comparison, we use just the total expenses divided by the number of available beds. So it's just a very general comparison. We also covered some challenges and opportunities that we feel Casa is facing. They are currently in discussion with Peoples Assisting the Homeless Path, which is a well-known, established homeless provider based in Los Angeles. The uncertainty of the potential merger made it somewhat difficult to assess Casa Esperanza's financial security for the future. However, we felt the expertise of a longstanding organization could actually help sustain them. Under Neighborhood Relations, the programmatic and administrative changes at Casa has improved their relationship with the Milpis neighborhood. Casa's report to the Planning Commission in October was largely positive, and the Milpis Action Task Force report was favorable and indicative of an improved relationship between Casa and the neighborhood. I believe that was the first time that they've been in front of the Planning Commission where it was positive. Ongoing funding. Casa's funding plan for the future will be challenging, especially without the extra one-time funding from the city and the county. Their plan for ongoing funding includes requesting ongoing support from prior funders, requesting support from new funding sources that were not previously available to them due to their programs and outcomes, and also asking the city, the county, and Cottage Hospital to adequately reimburse them for their services. Neither the nonprofit research that we did or the shelter comparison data was useful in determining the overall level of funding that the city should provide to Casa Esperanza. It really comes down to a council policy decision. And in conclusion, Casa Esperanza ended fiscal year 2014 with a slight surplus. They've adopted a realistic budget for fiscal year 2015. They've strengthened their finances and their operations. They are dealing with their outstanding debt and have reduced some of that. They've become better neighbors in the Milpis area. They recruited an experienced managing director, and they are considering a merger in the near future. Staff's recommendation is that council release the restriction on the additional funding for fiscal year 2015 and allocate the remaining funds on a monthly basis from now through the end of June. And if Casa feels that they need the extra funding in fiscal year 2016 or beyond, we recommend that they come back to council during the budget process with that request and give an update on the merger talks as well as their success in getting the rest of their funding for this year. And with that, I will take questions. We also have Joe Tumblr and Jessica Wishen here, and they would like to make a brief presentation.
Do you want to hear the presentation first, David Quick? Go ahead, Mr. Rouse.
Yeah, Ms. Gray. Going back to the daily bed rate slide, and you mentioned that it was this number of expenses divided by number of beds. And when you say expenses, is that strictly operational expenses or include overhead and mortgage and other types of expenses? Is this operations where you have, you know...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse. It's the, they're total operating expenses, which does include their payments for mortgage and all their, I mean, it's the agency's operating.
That's all. And you know, do you know if the other agencies calculate it that way, or you're saying...
We did it the same way.
Exactly.
We took their information from their 990s.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the interest, you mentioned that the, a million dollars or plus had been forgiven with the Gilde money, as well as the county and city have forgiven a million dollars worth of mortgage money. So we're looking at, and on your spreadsheet here, you have $130,000 in interest on the, I guess it's for this fiscal year that's budgeted. And I'm wondering if that's, so there are two sources of that. There's the mortgage, there's a million-dollar mortgage on the building, and then the rest is the Gilde 3% money. Those are the two loans that are being, that are being funded out of that $130,000.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, I believe that that is the case. However, Casa Esperanza can answer better.
That would be a great, if you address that when you get, when you, during your presentation, that'd be great. Thank you.
Did we give the first allocation of funds in one chunk, or did we pay out monthly like you're recommending here?
One chunk.
And so why the recommendation, just, why not just do the sec, if we so choose, do it all at once? What was the thought behind monthly payments?
The thought behind that, Madam Mayor, was because we're not really sure what's going to happen with the merger, and maybe they're going to, they might propose to change programs drastically. It was just kind of to have a little more control over our money monthly.
Just because we're in flux with the merger situation.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that makes sense. And I want to acknowledge Terry Musniches from the county is here and acknowledge the two of you in particular for all the work that you've been doing on this, so thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
In renegotiating the mortgage, you ease the cash crunch, but how much do you increase the debts by? Because renegotiating a mortgage inevitably increases the total amount.
I guess that's the Mr. Tumblr question.
Yes.
So with that, why don't we have you come on up, Mr. Tumblr, and you can think about that as, but welcome.
Madam Mayor, honorable City Council members, my name is Joe Tumblr. I am the volunteer interim executive director of Casa Esperanza, and I have been involved with Casa since July of 2013 as a member of their finance committee, non-board member. And so I am intimately familiar with their finances and also their plan to return to financial and operating stability. The staff report that was previously distributed to you presents, in my view, a very good summary of our operations and the changes that we have taken to put Casa on a sound path going forward, and I therefore will not repeat them, although I had planned to do so. Let me add a couple of points, if I may, and then respond specifically to the questions that you raised. With respect to the debt restructuring, we are now in a position, as I will describe in greater detail later, where we can pay off all but our mortgage in 10 years so that supporters of Casa can be confident that their donations will fund current and ongoing activities of Casa rather than to pay for past debt service payments. Programmatically, and very importantly, we have become a sobriety-based residential shelter. As noted, we discontinued our drop-in day center program and our open lunch program, which were no longer affordable. In our homeless-to-housing program, we require that clients be Santa Barbara residents for at least six months. They must obtain a job if they are able, and they must save 70% of their income while they are working. And they must implement a plan to move to independent living, and they must refrain from drug and alcohol use while in the shelter's programs. And these, these changes have allowed us to focus on, and over the long run, improve client and program outcomes. While they may have been driven by financial limitations, they have yielded significant strategic benefits to us going forward. We have also become a good neighbor. We actively patrol and we clean the neighborhood to address neighborhood concerns. There was no opposition to Casa at our recent two-year CUP review last month, and that is in stark contrast with the acrimony of our review two years ago. Nuanced police, excuse me, nuisance police activity in the Milpis corridors, north and south, and the beach areas are down significantly in the past year when compared with an increase elsewhere in the city. Going forward, we have a challenged but a balanced budget for the fiscal year, thanks in an important part to the discretionary funding from the city and from the county. We are working to obtain reimbursement levels from our contractors that better reflect our actual operating costs. We are applying to new sources of funding, all right, that may be available to us as a result of the programmatic actions that we have taken. We are collaborating with PATH, which is a successful Southern California-based provider of housing and homeless services. PATH operates 22 facilities in Southern California and will bring scale, expertise, and capacity building that will strengthen Casa Esperanza. We are in the early stages of discussion with them, and I'd be pleased to answer questions that you might have when I finish my remarks. Our budget requires that we raise 58% of our income from private sources, including slightly more than $425,000 from individuals and foundations between now and the end of our fiscal year if we're to meet our budget goals. While we believe that this is achievable based on our past results, we are hopeful for a positive response to our fall fundraising letter, which we just mailed to supporters. In sum, I believe that we have taken dramatic steps to turn our operations and our finances around, and so far have been successful in doing so. We are very grateful for the continued support of City Council, and we hope you will look favorably upon our progress. If you will allow me, what I'd like to do is to introduce Jessica Wishan, have her speak, and then I'll be pleased to address the mortgage and related questions. I would now like to introduce Jessica Wishan, our new managing director. Jessica previously served as the managing director of the San Diego equivalent of C3H. Previously, she worked at PATH, most notably developing their startup San Diego Residential Center from scratch, a $42 million, 14-floor integrated facility in the financial district of San Diego. While she was there, the organization, which was not encouraged by the local community nor local foundations and nonprofits, but while she was there, she earned the support of the local community and of local funders. of the local community and of local funders. I am proud to have her join us. I know that she will work effectively and collaboratively with all of CASA's constituents, and I am certain that she is going to become an asset to the Santa Barbara community. I'd now like to introduce her and have her say a few words, and then I'll respond to your questions.
Welcome to Santa Barbara.
Thank you so much for the introduction, Joe, and my gratitude goes to the city and county of Santa Barbara for your continued advocacy and support to ensure CASA Esperanza can provide life-changing housing and services to our homeless neighbors. I'm excited to return to Santa Barbara, I'm a Gaucho, to continue a career path that I am so passionate about. During my first two weeks working in this role, I've observed remarkable commitment, collaboration, and coordination in the community from both private and public sector, working together to end homelessness. I've been inspired by the staff at CASA Esperanza, who worked tirelessly with their members to instill in them values of recovery, health, and empower them through their case management to find permanent housing and employment. And I'm confident that with the recent changes in finances and operations at CASA Esperanza that we have a reason for hope, just as our name says. Looking ahead, we will work with staff and community partners on the following: to focus on housing as a solution to ending homelessness, to leverage our available resources and strengthen care coordination with our committed onsite partners, donors, and volunteers, to invest in employment and life skills opportunities for our residents and program members while staying focused on outcomes and tracking and communicating our progress, and importantly, to ensure that collaboration and communication happens so that we can be a positive asset to our neighbors. It does take the whole community working together to end homelessness, and we really thank you for helping make that happen. Thanks.
You, Mr. Tumbler.
So if I may respond, if I remember the questions, one of the questions was refinancing our mortgage. Our mortgage is roughly a $1 million mortgage at 7% interest with a, has a 30-year amortization and a balloon payment due in 2017. We were a very weak credit, and we're not able to talk with the bank about refinancing the mortgage prior to our restructuring. We now have, as you, our audited financials show an operating profit of $1,154,000 last year. All but $28,000 of that was debt forgiveness and interest forgiveness. Because we have large net worth and we meet financial ratio covenants, the bank is more likely to be willing to refinance our mortgage, we are hopeful, at 5%. Our current mortgage payments are about $96,000 a year, about $78,000 of that a year currently is interest. If we were to refinance the mortgage at 5%, we would save roughly $20,000, roughly $20,000 a year of interest that you saw in the $133,000 number to which you previously referred. It would not be our goal to increase our payments. We would look for a 20- or 30-year amortization without a balloon payment. We're not exactly sure what's available in the marketplace, given that we are evolving as a credit as opposed to a strong financial credit. I'm not sure what more I need, what you'd like me to tell you.
Mr. Hotchkiss, does that cover your question as well?
No, I gather the questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. May I proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed that always we seem to all say that your mission is to help as many people as possible move from homelessness to housing, and I think that what you're saying in that is that you're, want to move people to self-sufficiency. Would that be a more accurate term? Housing being just one aspect of that?
So I do not profess to be the expert on this subject, but my vision is that moving all of our clients from homelessness to housing is aspirational. I don't know how our clients can be comfortable and self-sufficient without the comfort of knowing that they have a place to live. But again, this is a personal opinion. I don't profess to be the expert. The challenge that we face, let me say something about the profound changes in our programming. We wish to be more than a shelter for people to live for a long period of time without the sense of urgency to improve themselves. And so the steps that we've taken with homeless-to-housing is our attempt to have clients who present themselves and are accepted in the program agree to self-improvement, agree to a plan that they build over 100 days, agree to get a job, agree to build those life skills necessary for them to move to independence. The challenge that we face is a lack of housing for them to go to, and which explains why our housing placement numbers are down last year versus the year before, both a shortage of housing and a shortage of TBRA and other rehousing dollars that allow us to assist in that transition. Things that we are doing now, we are applying for the, under the Homes Project, funding to have the rental assistance and related support. We are helping people move out of area in a positive way to other jobs and in communities that may be more affordable. An example is that we've just moved, I believe, two of our clients to Lompoc, where they are employed and where it is more affordable for them to live. We had a family reunification budget that we had to cut as a result of our financial stringency. If we are able to raise enough money, we would think about reinstituting that so that we can, as you see, we had objectives, all right, for family reunification, to allow people to go and reunite in whatever location that that may be in a constructive way.
Those are great answers. Thank you. I think we are in agreement. It's just possibly a difference in terms.
Yes, sir.
The other thing I was going to ask is, let's say that you should come into a windfall. Would you assure the city that you do not plan to return to the day program and the free lunches, et cetera, because it's had such a positive, their determination has had such a positive effect on the local community?
Let me say that first and foremost, I personally feel an obligation to be a good neighbor. I have said that to the Milpus Area Task Force, and I say that to you here today. And that is something that I know the CASA board is similarly committed to. So we do not take that obligation lightly, and I know that you have seen through our behaviors over the past 12 months that we are working diligently to do so. And the proof of that pudding is in the response that we got at the CUP hearing. I think it's premature to address the issue of would we ever go back to something? If we got a windfall, the first thing that I would do is bank it for a rainy day, because right now we are living on the edge from payroll to payroll, and you need to have financial stability in order to manage any operation through the vagaries of the funding cycle. We are very mindful that there are a variety of factors that have combined to make us a good neighbor, including our own will to be so. One of them was going to a sobriety-based program. The other was going to entirely a residential program. And the other was selecting clientele in that program that had demonstrated a willingness to move to living independence as opposed to just living at CASA. I don't believe it alone is the day center and the free open lunch program.
No, the sobriety part is extremely important.
I think, and it's a behavioral element as opposed to, now, we require that our clients path both pass both a drug screening and that they blow zeros on a breathalyzer upon entering the program. And then we have random checks to assure that they have, that they are compliant, and if they are not, there are sanctions, which start at the first of exiting them from the program for an evening, and then the sanctions will get more severe. So behaviorally, we need people who are committed to a proper lifestyle and are not disruptive to others around them.
Is PATH in agreement with what you just said? Do you know?
I would have PATH speak for themselves. However, I would point out to council that their track record has been remarkable in the other jurisdictions in which they have operated. And I do not suppose, presuppose that I know all of the tools that they have at their disposal to deal with the matter. What I can promise you is several things. By the way, our conversations with PATH are, at this stage, in a management services agreement that may lead to something more significant. Frankly, it would, in my view, be in the best interests of this community should something like that come about. The commitments are that all money raised in Santa Barbara stays in Santa Barbara. The next commitment is that all the constituencies that CASA serves need to be supportive of PATH's entry into this community. And so you will be hearing from them and have the opportunity to have conversations with them so that you can understand exactly what their programs would be and whether it meets with the approval of this group, for example.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, thank you very much for your frank, candid assessment of the past and the future. I really appreciate your honesty and directness. I think it's the turnaround at CASA is extraordinary, and I think everyone is in agreement that we're on the right path, whether it be PATH or CASA Esperanza.
I hope.
And your knowledge, your intimate knowledge of the finances is also very encouraging and very confidence-inspiring. One very detailed question, if you don't know the answer, I apologize in advance for asking it. Looking at the shelter comparisons by counties, a number that pops out to me is the insurance cost, which historically was in the $32,000 range, is now $109,000, and the comparable other shelters are in the $20,000 range. Is there something unique about the insurance?
Yes. The answers are as follows. Our general liability costs went from about $25,000 to $28,000. Our directors and officers, officers and employers' liability costs have skyrocketed. And I would rather have, not go into all the details for the reasons behind that, but to say that one policy has not renewed, and then another policy has renewed. The way the policies are drafted or written, they cover a period of time of 12 months, and they do not cover the future 12 months for periods, for events that occurred during the policy period that are not reported, IBNR. And so we have the equivalent of a double policy, all right, one for the current year and one for the tail coverage from the prior year. That policy, that costs $37,500 for the tail coverage, so.
Coincidentally, at the MTD Board meeting today, they were talking about this very subject. So I know it just enough to be dangerous, and I appreciate your answer. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. We, if you can, yeah, take a seat. We do have a couple of public comment speakers, and then we'll bring it back to council. We'll have Jason Colbert, I don't know if you're like Stephen or Colbert, and then Jose Ortuero Gallegos.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. I just have to say, I've been at CASA, and I've dealt with them before, and I mean, there might be some positive things they're doing, but I mean, they've, in the past, it hasn't been positive. And I would just have to say, I would, I would object to giving more money to something that doesn't seem to work, because, I mean, they were, to me, they seem to be warehousing the homeless, the mentally ill, the other people that are just, I mean, there's people dying on our streets every day, drug addicts, alcoholics. And I mean, there's, they've stopped the free lunch program, the showers, it's like, what are these people supposed to do? You know? And it's good to be clean and sober, but I'm saying, these people need to be, they need someplace to be took care of. And I mean, I see there's always a lot of police activity, there's always a lot of, a lot of stuff happening in those areas, and they're saying there's not. I mean, this is, this is, this program doesn't work. It's been going on for 13 or 14 years when it opened here in Santa Barbara, 13 or 14 years ago. I mean, Mike Foley and the lady that was his, you know, his counterpart, I mean, they totally ruined the place. And I mean, this is, this is, there's people dying literally constantly. And I mean, there's, if it worked, and I'm hearing these big, big numbers, I mean, what happens to the homeless and the other people? I mean, they're, you know, they're not, they're not, the only place that the homeless can get lunches is at the Salvation Army. They get a burrito in the morning and a shower, and sometimes at the mission, I guess, every night, and then there's, but I mean, if CASA's so great, why are these, why do people keep dying on the streets? People keep, people are sleeping, they're, they're not getting housing, they're not, they're not getting what their needs met. I would say, don't, don't give the money, because I don't see any, I don't see any growth in positive, nothing, nothing's positive. You know, I just, this is just a revolving door, you know, I just, I don't see anything that's going to happen, you know? Santa Barbara, we know, is not an affordable place to live. At the same time, there might have been some success stories, but there's been more negative than success, you know? I mean, I've dealt with CASA sometimes, they're not friendly to people, they have their favorites. The homeless are not getting their needs met, not whatsoever. I don't see any positive changes, you know? I'm not, I'm not, you guys, you guys have decisions to make, but I mean, thank you.
Jose Ortuero Gallegos.
My question to Ms. Wishan and Mr. Tumbler, why would I need CASA Esperanza to get me into housing? Why would I do that? First of all, they're saying 70% of income, whether you work or not. Well, I have my own bank account, I have my own checking, I have my own savings. So, this right here, this is my original birth certificate, St. Francis Hospital, with a California golden seal. My county birth certificate. And they're saying, six months or more, we will help you. January 23rd, 1956. When I was born, and my mom was, you and I were released from the hospital, we lived on Sheffield Drive in Montecito. Shortly afterwards, we moved to Miramar Lane, lived there. My mom was a living housekeeper. After the lady had passed away, we lived on Brinkerhoff in Coeur d'Alene for a short period of time, and then from there, to the east side. So my question is, why I have to go to CASA Esperanza so I can get into housing? And why would I want to give them my money? Uh-uh, no, I'm still sleeping on the streets. Unfortunately, those of us, including myself, we lost sleeping at United Methodist Church because the problems, again, it turned into the Trinity. Okay, now I have to sneak into a place on a nightly basis to avoid security and get up at 5:00 a.m. and be out of there at 6:00. I put in an application in July at the Victoria Hotel for self-help housing, the Duncan Group. I went there last week, Wednesday. Oh, sir, we don't have your application on file, you have to reapply again. And I have been told, anybody who has above-average intelligence, and I've been told this, and I've been told I'm very articulate, oh, sorry, we can't help you. But if I'm bouncing around downtown State Street, you know, screaming or passed out from drugs or alcohol, whatever, oh, then somebody's going to come along and help me.
You need to wind up, please.
Okay, well, anyways, and Mr. Rouse, I went looking for you the other day, little Friday. Excellent muzzles. Had that on the menu. All right.
Thank you. Dorothy? She'll be the final speaker.
See, council, I'm not, I'm a little ill-prepared, but I really appreciate the subject of homelessness. I'm dealing with a lot of difficulty in my job being in transportation, because very often people will discover there's nowhere to go. If the hotels are filled up and they don't have a destination, it makes it very difficult. So I'm pleased that there's a CASA Esperanza available so that we can direct people where they can go. I think it'd be great if there was a bigger intake system, something where I could, and others that are trying to help people that are having a problem on the streets can, can take people. And that would be so helpful, because currently, obviously economically and emotionally, this would be such a better choice, because going to the ER all the time, which is the cycle that all these people go through, is obviously too expensive, too overburdened, and just not a practical solution. And we really need to have somewhere where we can bring people that are obviously not going to be a problem, you know? They're nice people, they're humans, they're needing help, they can have a shower, they can have an intake, they can have possible entrance into some of these programs and different things. But currently, the people that are most hard off are actually the ones who are actually helping the homeless people, and it's a huge burden for these people. It's not relaxing to not know where people are going to go and have a safe place for them to be. It's so stressful. And now that our bottom of our State Street is just kind of, you know, in ruins and the black hole and everything, it presents more problems with, you know, people, vagrants and so forth, that nobody wants to be one of those. And yes, people will always choose to come to this area, and you can't help everyone, agreed, but saving money and doing the right thing in a philosophical way, in a practical way, would be so great. And we have a network, I believe, of a lot of nonprofits that are supposedly supposed to be helping people that are in jeopardy and need a place to go. Please connect me with those, because it's so hard. And I know I'm not the only taxi person to deal with this. I know there's a lot of us, and some people have a network where I can bring someone or they can bring someone to spend the night or rent a room or something, and.
You need to wind up, please.
It would be great if this could be incorporated, and I think CASA Esperanza at least has been somewhere that I know has helped people, and I can bring people there, and whatever you want to do, you should get a task force and do it, because it'll save money as well as make you feel good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you, Mr. Tumbler, for your presentation. I think that was pretty impressive. The comments, you know, from Mr. Colbert, Mr. Gallegos, you know, point out that this really is a dynamic problem. It's not simple, there's no one great solution. But I have to say, from having observed CASA over the years, having heard from the METF and the other neighbors in Milpus, that you guys have gone a long, long way, especially to meeting. to meeting the assignment that this body appeared gave you to perform, and the, and the metrics, clearly, the, you know, the job isn't done, the job probably will never be done-done, but the, but the improvements in that particular facility, I think, are remarkable, so I will be supporting the motion when its time comes.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'd, I think, first of all, how can I have been here, sitting here all these years, and not gotten such a clear picture of how far into the ground CASA Esperanza has been run? I really, I just had not gotten that full picture till this report. I just, that, that, I mean, I think I really sort of had placed more trust, I think, in the board, which has on it members that are prominent, good, good financial folks, and yet, this is, this is really a terrible number of years that have gone on here, putting us in a, putting this organization in, in such tough shape. And obviously, Mr. Tumbler, I just can't believe that you've taken this on, and I, this community owes you a huge debt of gratitude for the work you're doing, you are, you just, thank you so much. So, and we have this new, young director here, my goodness, this is really the very essence of hope here, that you, that you bring to us, so. And also, one thing I want, what I heard you say, Mr. Tumbler, one important little bit that, that people have heard out of my mouth for a decade or longer about this, about homelessness, is fair share. And you mentioned that a couple of folks, you'd found housing for them in Lampokeg. Well, this is a, this is important to me, that this organization have its antenna up to get the fair share out there more in this region, just in our region, and that other jurisdictions are participating in managing the problem. Obviously, we get money from the county, but it's, literally, it's the distributing of this problem, and of the, of the folks that are, have the various needs throughout our, our region, is an important ingredient for fair share. So, thank you for that little hint there, and I hope that CASA Esperanza will continue on, as one of the veins of, of that sort of distribution. The golf cart, you were mentioning patrol, well, I mean, what a, what a great emblem that the Milpus Community Association actually turned around and donated a golf cart to CASA Esperanza in order to help with the patrolling. That's how far, in a good direction, this all has come. So, I just appreciate what you have done, and I really look forward to seeing a sensible system be developed moving forward, and obviously, one that's run properly financially, you've just gotta, it's just gotta be run, you gotta start with the finances, with all of these things, in order to have sustainability. So, a lot of good news today, Madam Mayor.
Good. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Wishan and Mr. Tumbler, for your presentation, Ms. Gray. And I'd also like to thank the Gildea Foundation for what seems like incredible generosity, and also the county's contribution. I read somewhere in the staff report that CASA Esperanza had cut its budget by 42%. If we did that at the city, we would be closing down programs and firing people, well, I guess that's what you did, right, to some respect? And I'm not happy at all that they stopped serving lunch. I get it that the people coming there to eat the lunch were causing problems in the neighborhood, so there's the positive of that. But I also heard from the churches over on the east side, that a lot of working people who couldn't make ends meet also went there to eat some lunch. So, I'm not celebrating that aspect of the loss of that service. And maybe the, a couple of the public commenters were touching on how really complicated it is to work in this field. The shelter will always have its critics, and their services will never be perfect. And I think what I'm glad for, serving on the Milpus Action Task Force, that it has taken the politics out of this situation. There was a lot of negative publicity generated, I think unfairly against CASA Esperanza, and like I always say when I'm up here, let's not exaggerate the problems, let's look at what the real problems are, so we can find real solutions. So, I'm grateful that things seem to be coming into a clearing, but it's a tough town, it's a tough town, and you miss a rent payment, you're evicted, you know? And, and there's a lot of different things that create homelessness. And it is our responsibility here at the city to make sure that all of our residents are taken care of. So, I will move the staff recommendation that we accept this information and release the remaining contingency funds.
There a second? Great. Mr. Hotchkiss, and then Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mr. White touched on a very good point. You present, made an excellent presentation, very encouraging, but if we look back over our shoulders, we have to remonstrate with the board and say they didn't do their job. I really think they didn't. So, I hope they'll look in the mirror and realize they, they failed, and they failed the city. They can't do that in the future. Listening to you and Yuma Swish, and I, I don't think that will happen, at least as far as you're concerned, so I'm glad you're on board, both of you. There are lots of solutions, as a number of us have said here, that include relocation, work, housing, personal resolution, but you will be a success if you help people, which I think you intend to do, get back on their feet. That's a tough, tough deal, and it has to be, have participation with the individual, not just you. So, of course, I'll be supporting this too. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I'll also be supporting the motion, and I think that the board frankly deserves a lot of credit for recognizing the problem that they created as well, but there was a model that was being pursued, which was the idea that you could have an open door, and that you could serve anybody under any circumstances, and that that deserved a chance to be tested, and it was, and it didn't work as well as folks had aspirationally hoped for. And the board recognized that fact, in addition to the financial crisis, and has adjusted the program and the financing, and has taken a different path, and it is proving to be successful. And I think that's ultimately the challenge for anybody involved in any endeavor, is to recognize the reality of the situation that you're in, and adjust them to change circumstances, and, and adapt to that. So, I think that's something that should be applauded for everybody's participation in it.
Question for Ms. Gray, or Ms. Nistich, is the county board of supervisors allocated their full amount yet, or is that still pending?
Madam Mayor, they are scheduled to go on December 9th.
Okay.
For the full allocation.
Great, okay, it's just good to know. Thank you also for the presentation, and also to staff as well. I know it was a big ask when it came to us during the budget cycle for this extra funds, actually, it was for more than what we had on here, and we got to this arrangement in the, in the review and coming back, I mean, it, you know, this wasn't taken lightly, this was a very serious review of, of programs and services, and then an adjustment, and I do believe that CASA Esperanza has exceeded the expectations we asked for back in June, when we asked for this report prior to the winter shelter opening, so I'm, I'm very pleased with that. And I, I visited PATH back when I was a council member, and with a number of people, Ron Fox was the, when he first moved to town, I think he's still on the board of CASA Esperanza, he, not anymore, but he was, and he was connected to PATH, or he knew about it, and they are very well-regarded in Los Angeles, at least, and I know they have other areas in other parts of California. Joel John Roberts is a well-known, well-respected leader on this issue, he's still connected with PATH as well, so I'm very encouraged to hear those connections and potential new partnerships, because I think, in terms, especially of the overhead and the just general administration of things, that in and of itself is gonna create a big cost savings in your day-to-day operations, and, and then having the connection to other programs and services throughout Southern California, I think, we, we will help us. I think what happens in Los Angeles impacts us here in Santa Barbara, and so to have a better idea of what's going on, and, and being more connected will only help us in the future, especially knowing, and I think to say, that the promise of any funding that comes from Santa Barbara will stay in Santa Barbara, that'll be an important thing to remind people as well. So, I'm very encouraged by this, and I would expect, given, be good to know, I hope by springtime, by our budget season, what the, you know, arrangement's gonna be with PATH, because we might be seeing you again, and, and we'll have to look at, this is a one-time expenditure this budget year, and if we want to continue that in the next budget year. So, continue with the good work, and continue with doing what you've been doing. I think it's, it's been commendable, it's been a huge change in the last 12, 18 months, for sure, so. With that, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so, moving on to item number 14.
Public meeting on the proposed modification of 2011 to 2015 Santa Barbara South Coast Tourism Business Improvement District.
Déjà vu, it feels like. Ms. Wilson, go, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, and members of the city council, for a little background, I'll just review where we've been with the Santa Barbara South Coast Tourism Business Improvement District. This T-Bid was originally formed in September of 2010. It was a five-year term commencing on January 2011 to expire in December of 2015. It did include the cities of Santa Barbara, Goleta, Carpinteria, and the County of Santa Barbara. It's a voluntary assessment, hotels, flat rates from 50 cents to $2 per room, and these monies are used towards marketing and advertising of the region. The district budget is managed by Visit Santa Barbara, and is currently at about $1.75 million. It is comprised currently of 81 hotels. In July, the Visit Santa Barbara began the process to renew the district, and they did so by requesting that council adopt a resolution requesting consent of the County of Santa Barbara, Goleta, and Carpinteria to be included in this district. The City of Carpinteria did not approve to be included in the district, so the renewed district no longer includes the City of Carpinteria. Visit Santa Barbara also submitted petitions to begin the process of 68% support of the weighted average of the hotels within the district. Council did approve a resolution to renew the district on September 9th. The renewed T-Bid did include increased assessment rates of 75 cents to $4 per room, and did also include vacation rentals at a $2 per room rate. Notices were provided to the 81 hotels and about 322 vacation rentals. Public meeting was held on September 30th, and a public hearing was held on October 28th. At that time, the council did approve the renew, the renewal of the T-Bid to commence January of 2015. It also approved the management district plan and a contract with Visit Santa Barbara to manage the budget for the new district. However, since the new district commences on January of 2015, it overlaps with the existing district that is currently in place. Therefore, council adopted a resolution of intention to modify the existing district. And what that means is to end the term of the current district one year early, so that the renewed district would then take place on January 1st of 2015. So, today is a public meeting, as set per law, to hear any comments. The resolution of intention also set a public hearing on December 16th to take final actions to modify the district, and to end the term of the district one year early. Here today is Cheryl Cummings with Civitas, representing Visit Santa Barbara, to go over the legal process and requirements to modify the district that I presented today.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. As Jeanne mentioned, the public hearing today is for modification of the current T-Bid district to have an effective end date of January 31st, 2014. You did approve a mod, or a resolution of formation on, on October 28th to form a renewed district beginning on January 1st, 2015. The current 2011-2015 bid requires your approval to end on December 31st. The December 16th meeting will conclude the process of the formation of the T-Bid and the modification of the existing bid, and based today on what the process is, is, Madam Mayor, you'll ask to, you'll open and ask for comments, the council will then hear public comments, you will close the public hearing, and then no action is actually required by council today.
Your first statement said that this was to conclude the original T-Bid on January 31st, 2014. I'm assuming you meant December 31st, 2014.
Sorry, December 31st, sorry.
Okay.
That's correct.
Just to be clear.
Sorry about that.
Yep, that's okay. Okay, any questions first? No. Okay, I, I will open up the public hearing, I don't see any speaker slips, is there anyone here to speak on this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I don't think, do we need a motion on this right now? I think we can just.
Maybe not.
We're just having the public hearing, and we'll be back on December 16th to do the final resolution, so.
Have a comment?
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Mario.
Madam Mayor, so, in the budget financial section of our report, it says that the current T-Bid generates approximately $1.75 million for marketing outreach, the renewal will generate an additional $1.38 million for marketing efforts, so it's, those numbers added together, right? So, that would have been nice in the report, and also for the public to know that this is generating, you know, more than $3 million. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, thank you very much, we don't need a motion on this, so, move on to item number 15.
Appeal of single-family design board denial of a residence on Lot 2 of the 3626 San Remote Drive subdivision.
Okay, this is an appeal, so just explaining how this will work, we'll have a presentation from staff of the project, and then, I do know we have a member of the single-family design review board here, who will speak at that point. The applicant is also the appellant, so there'll be one presentation of up to 30 minutes for that presentation. It will go, we might have questions for that applicant slash appellant, it'll then go to public comment, so if you'd like to speak on this issue, we need a speaker slip from you, and you'll have up to two minutes to speak on that item, and then after that, we'll close the public part of it, and it'll go back to council for deliberation and a vote. So, with that, Mr. Gellitz, and, yes, oh, so I'm sorry, Ms. Mario, go right ahead.
I need to recuse myself from this item, not because of financial conflict, but because I want to avoid the appearance of a conflict, a family member owns property across the street, so, thank you.
Okay, we'll see you later. And I don't know if Ms., oh, there you are, I was gonna just ask the same question if Mr. Francisco was here. Okay, all right, you can begin, as soon as she leaves the room. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. This item before you is an appeal of the Single Family Design Board's September 22nd denial of a project. The proposal is for a 2,652-square-foot, two-story house that includes a 479-square-foot garage. The total floor area of 3,132 square feet is 74% of the maximum floor area allowed by the zoning ordinance. This is Lot 2 of a four-lot subdivision, the subdivision was originally approved by the planning commission in October of 2010. The applicant had some revisions to the subdivision that went before the planning commission in August of this year. The subdivision includes preservation of historic facades on Lot 3. It includes a view corridor to the historic facades, creek restoration, a conservation easement along the creek, and in response to neighbor comments and comments from the Single Family Design Board and Historic Landmarks Commission, the planning commission added guest parking to three of the four lots, including Lot 2, at that August hearing. This is aerial of the project site, the subdivision site is one and a half acres, along the eastern side of the site is San Roque Creek. of the site is San Roque Creek. And this is the subdivision, so Lot 2 is the third lot up from San Remo Drive. The lots are numbered from north to south.
I have a question. Mr. White?
When he's finished, I want to talk about, ask about this, which is me describing the subdivision.
Okay, go ahead.
The hatched area is a conservation easement along the creek. The current condition is the driveway runs along the creek side, and the driveway is actually flipped to the west side of the subdivision, as part of the subdivision approval. And this highlighted area is the, it's the view corridor easement that was required by Planning Commission.
Oh, Mr. Gullett, the, I noticed that the, and obviously, this horse left long ago, but I'm still curious about it. It said the average slope on the property is like 7% or something. Yet, there's a super steep incision. The San Roque Creek looks to be 15 feet, something like that, below.
Right.
I don't understand the, how the slope issue works there. You, clearly, you don't use the bottom of the creek as the toe, the base of the, as part of the slope calculation. Could you help me with that?
That's correct. So if I recall correctly, it's the 25-year floodplain is what's deducted from the slope calculation. So we do have a slope density ordinance, which requires additional lot area depending on the slope density when the slopes are above 10%. So all in all, excluding that creek area you described, each of these lots is less than than 10%.
The slope density ordinance excludes creeks from the slope calculation?
It excludes a portion of the creek.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can you translate that?
Right. So the zoning is E3, same as all the neighboring properties to the north, west, and east, and it requires 7,500-square-foot minimum. What our zoning ordinance does is for, for steeply sloped lots that are above 10% average slope, you need more lot area per lot. So it's up to three times the lot area depending on the slope of the lot.
Okay. Did you want to follow up on that, Mr. White?
I do. And since this is, Mr. Gullett is just, unfortunately, is the perfect man for me to be asking this to, because you're a former county guy, right?
I am.
And the theoretical top of bank would apply in the county, and it doesn't apply in the city. Is that right?
We did look at theoretical top of bank, and for the benefit of council, theoretical top of bank is what we call an angle of repose. So it's what would be the stable angle of the creek bank with erosion. So we did look at setbacks from that theoretical top of bank, and the Planning Commission approved a 45-foot setback for lots 1, 2, and 4. And because Lot 3 is historic, it's closer, it's at 35 feet.
Okay. But so that was taken into consideration?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Francisco also has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Gullett, could you point out, you have a laser pointer, I assume, could you point out the top of bank there on Lot 2?
It's this line here.
Okay. How, how much of that lot, so, does the edge of that lot actually go to the center of San Roque Creek?
The, yeah, this eastern line is usually the center line of the creek. It's not perfectly the center line of the creek, but, yes.
And how much, how much square footage of that lot is there between top of bank and center of creek? Do you know?
I think it's about 52 or 53 percent of the lot is, sorry, not top of bank to center line. I'm talking the conservation easement area, so the hatched area.
Right.
But this area, I don't have a calculation for.
Okay. But it looks like roughly maybe a quarter of the lot.
I think that's a good guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You can continue.
So here's a view from San Remo Drive. This is the view corridor easement. And one of the historically significant aspects of this house is its historic prominence along the street. And this is aerial photograph from 1952 showing the house. This is what the neighborhood looks like today, and this is with the applicant's rendering of the conceptual houses.
So, I know we're not talking about parcel 4, but just to understand the view easement, when parcel 4 is going through its review process now, and so the placement of parcel 4, which will be in front of parcel 3, okay, that's what I wanted to see, to make sure that that view easement is still there. Okay, got it. Thank you.
So, as the mayor mentioned, there are concurrent reviews of each of the four houses for each of the four lots, and there's also an overall subdivision plan, including the driveway and landscaping along the creek area. So, Single Family Design Board has been reviewing lots 1, 2, and 4, since Lot 3 has a historically significant house that's been at Historic Landmarks Commission. Each of the four houses proposed are around the same floor area and around the same percent of the maximum floor area for the lots. So the current status is lots 1 and 4 are still pending before Single Family Design Board. Single Family Design Board also requested size reductions for the houses for lots 1 and 4. Lot 3 was approved last month before Historic Landmarks Commission, and Single Family Design Board approved the overall subdivision plan. So, staff anticipates the outcome of today's hearing will affect the future reviews of these other lots.
Mr. Francisco?
So, what exactly did the HLC approve concerning Lot 3?
So, Lot 3 has two historically significant facades. So the, all buildings will be demolished on the site, and the historically significant facades will be replaced in their same footprint. So the Historic Landmarks Commission has been fairly meticulous about the architectural details on that, and I believe it went through five reviews before Historic Landmarks Commission before being approved.
So, is the existing Edwards &amp; Plunkett House, is that a similar square footage to what's being proposed here for the other houses?
The existing house? It's around the same square footage. The applicant has that number.
Okay.
I don't have that with me.
Okay, thank you.
And it was the Single Family Design Board that did the subdivision, not the Planning Commission?
So, the Single Family Design Board is charged with reviewing the subdivision grading plan and the design of the driveway and the landscaping.
Okay, but not the actual lot.
The perimeter fencing. I'm sorry.
The staff hearing officer piece. Okay, right, I'm getting all my reviews.
Yeah, so it's, Planning Commission reviewed the subdivision. But these are just the concurrent design review.
Okay, so in terms of, as relates to the design review of the subdivision, that's what Single Family Design Board did?
Correct.
And that's been approved. And when did that happen?
That happened earlier this year, I want to say, in June or July.
Okay, thank you.
A Planning Commission review was in August.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
So, for the Single Family Design Board's denial on September 22, the Single Family Design Board initially moved to continue the project, asking for additional reduction in size of the house. The board members and the neighbors had been calling for reductions in size throughout the five reviews of the project. So rather than having the project continue, the applicant asked for a denial of the project, so the applicant could be heard before City Council. So, the stated reasons for the denial, it was focused on the size of the house. The Single Family Design Board stated that the size was too large, but they did say in their motion that they approved of the massing in the scale of the house. So, to approve the project, Single Family Design Board or City Council on Appeal has to make the neighborhood preservation findings. The finding relevant to house size is the compatibility finding, which is up on the screen. It says, "The proposed development is compatible with the neighborhood, and its size, bulk, and scale are appropriate to the site and the neighborhood." So, the design board was okay with the size and bulk, or, I'm sorry, with the bulk and scale, but it's come down to a question of size of this house. So, building size, size is two dimensions. It's an area. The way our code considers size, it includes all accessory buildings, it includes carports and garages. Size can be difficult to perceive from the exterior of a building. It doesn't account for ceiling heights, or roof forms, or things like covered patios. And the way the city limits size is with what we call FAR. So, the maximum size of houses are based on the lot area, and that's only for lots that are less than 15,000 square feet. And it is a FAR guideline for lots that are greater than 15,000 square feet. So, of the four lots, only Lot 4, which is adjacent to the street, is above 15,000 square feet. So, the Single Family Residential Design Guidelines encourage designs that are less than 85 percent of the maximum floor area. Designs exceeding 85 percent of the maximum floor area require additional submittal information, including a 20 closest home study, things like street silhouettes. So, the maximum floor area for Lot 2 is 4,262 square feet. The initial proposal that came in was 78 percent of the maximum, and the current proposal before you today is 74 percent of the maximum. Though not required, the applicant did provide a 20 closest home study. These are the parcels they looked at. The 2s indicate that there's second stories on each of those lots. Here's the chart. It's in your council packet also. Lot 2 is bolded here. It's around, it's just under the average FAR for the houses studied, but it is the second-largest house in this study. This doesn't include any of the other three lots. It doesn't include the existing house. And you can see from this map, these lots along Ontare are much larger, so they allow for larger houses with our FAR requirements. And just for some neighborhood context, this is looking up Adair from San Remo, and this is looking east along Capri. This is on the north side of the property. The subject parcel is over here with this redwood, so this is looking east down San Remo. The 20 closest home study just looks at single-family houses. Considering the entire neighborhood context, there's also the two-story condominiums along San Remo, and there's additional two-story condominiums. And this is looking up Ontare. This is on the east side of the subdivision, and the subject property's over here. So, the closest house to the subject lot is 216 Adair. This is the elevation that faces that house, and here's a section through both houses. So the distance between the houses is about 60 feet, and there is proposed an eight-foot fence at the property line that would separate the properties.
Mr. Hotchkiss has a question.
The existing house that's there now is going to be torn down. How many feet is it from the nearest house? Do you know?
I don't have that information. I do have the plan, so I could scale that.
Could you? Because that'll give us a feel for how close this will be. In other words, is this going to be closer, or farther away, or about the same? Come back to that if you want. I don't want to tie up.
We can, we can come back to that.
Yeah.
So, this is the south elevation facing toward San Remo, the east elevation facing the creek, and the north elevation on the mountainside of the house. And I'll just quickly go through the evolution of the, of the west elevation of the house. So this is what Single Family Design Board saw in its first review, and I'll just run through these. The minutes are included in your packet. This was the house in the second review. The height was reduced here. This was the house in the third review. This is where that floor area came out of the second floor, between this and this. And this porch has taken off between the fourth and fifth review, and this is the project before you today. So, this is what the Single Family Design Board started with in January, and this is the house that they most recently reviewed in September. Staff believes that the applicant and the Single Family Design Board successfully reduced the bulk, scale, volume, and height of the house in those reviews. So, staff is supporting the applicant's appeal. Staff believes the house is a reasonable size and consistent with the FAR standard range that's provided for in the Single Family Residential Design Guidelines. And again, SFTB worked with the applicant and made for a better design of the house. Further reductions in floor area are possible, and those were discussed by the designer, Henry Lenny, at that meeting. He mentioned thickening walls to reduce floor area. One of the Single Family Design Board members suggested taking off this element, which wouldn't really be perceptible to anyone off-site. So, while reductions are possible, they may not be perceptible, and it is a four-bedroom house that's proposed here. So, staff is recommending that council grant the appeal, granting project design approval for the new single-family residents, making neighborhood preservation findings in the council agenda report. And that concludes my comments. Brian Miller is here, representing Single Family Design Board, and I'm available for questions.
Mr. Miller, why don't you come on up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council.
Welcome.
I will try to do this. Normally, Fred Sweeney does these presentations representing our board, but either for the relief or unfortunate that he's not here, I have to present it. So I will try to do this the best I can. Bear with me, and try to let you understand our reasoning and why we asked for the, a little more increase in the reduction of square footage. I have some drawings here that I'd like to present. I was wondering, can I use that overhead? Is that possible? And I also want to make it clear, too, this is, you know, being a building designer, I don't like being in a position like I'm the enemy, because unlike Fred, who's retired, and he can feel free to express his opinions, these may be future customers of mine, so I don't want to piss off anybody. So, my goal here is just to make clear why we did what we did, and our design, and why we encouraged the reduction of square footage. However, what they've done is beautiful work. I mean, they're doing a great job. So let me kind of go through what we were doing, and what our reasoning was, and why we wanted to reduce the square footage. So as the city mentioned, this is a sketch, you can see the pressure or the requirements that the developer had in terms of building the house. He can't build anywhere in here, so within the blue line, that is his only limitation of where he can build a home. And there's a different emphasis from a developer as opposed to a homeowner, because the developer, and in this particular case, they're doing all four lots, they have an economic pressure and interest to make sure that they make money or have a profit from their buildings, and they're very constrained in terms of how, where they can build. And in this particular case, because there's a creek right here, they are only limited to build here. So their interest, their economic interest, is to maximize what they can build, and able to not, you know, lose their shirts. One of the frustrations we had on the board was because each lot is individually... One of the frustrations we had on the board was because each lot is individually reviewed, we couldn't see it as an overall project, because there are four different lots, they're separate reviews. The board wanted to see it as an overall development scheme and the overall impact and how it would be with the neighborhood. We also were sensitive and took into account all the different neighbors that came who were concerned about privacy issues, especially if you look in this area here, you can see how this house kind of imposes its privacy issue here. And anyway, this is kind of the situation they have, and as I said earlier, the developer is forced to build right along here, and it's very close to the property line here. And that's also where the driveway is. One of the things we wanted as a board was an overall schematic. I can't do this. All right. Okay, keep going. There we are. Of what all the four properties would look in relation to the neighborhood. So Fred Sweeney drew this, and it really gives you a good idea of kind of what the overall impact of the complete development would be. This house here is the existing Edwards and Plunkett home. This is the house that will be closest to, no, I'm sorry, this is the Edwards and Plunkett home. This is the house closest to San Remo, and then these are the back lot, and then this is the adjacent property over here. Now, that's kind of an overall, and it looks like a nice development. However, our concern was mass, bulk, and scale with, okay. There we go. In terms of the size of the house compared to the adjacent neighborhood, like I said, the house is fine, but because of the restriction, they're forced to build way over here. This is a picture of some houses that SFD did approve, and they did apply to, or were within the FAR requirements of the property, and this is kind of the impact that occurred. And frequently, though we strive for perfection, you know, we don't always make it right perfectly in our judgment of the architecture, and this is kind of sometimes we look and we say, "Oh, my God, what happened?" And this kind of shows you that it is a little too bulky and overwhelming. This is another shot of those same homes. And so what we were thinking in terms of our direction, or what we were looking at for San Remo, was kind of this look. And now this is Plaza Rubio, and this is right across from the Mission. And as you can see, you've got a nice variation of sizes and bulks. I really was hoping that one of the houses was a one-story house, so it was like a village. And so that's kind of the direction that Single Family Design Board was going, or the kind of vision we were looking for this development. We thought it was a great opportunity for the developer to really vary the houses, but like I said earlier, we're restricted in only seeing one lot at a time. We couldn't see the overall development. But this was kind of the look and feel we were trying to achieve with their development. This is another view of Plaza Rubio. Like I said, what they have now is perfectly fine. I have no problem with what they've designed, but, you know, as far as size, bulk, and scale is concerned, we thought this was a far better aesthetic and less aggressive feel to that particular development. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Francisco.
Well, can I ask the question that I asked before of staff, which is, are these houses going to be closer to the Adair Street lots or same or farther away than the existing
Did you get that, Mr. Gullett? Did you have that answer?
He was looking, and I thought you might know.
I think Mr. Gullett has the answer now. We can answer that.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hotchkiss, we can see it on these images here. So this is the existing house. So this is, it's closer to the second house in from Adair. The most impacted house on Adair from the project before you is the third house in. And then this is the proposal. So it looks like it's about the same, maybe 10 or so feet more for the existing versus the proposed.
10 or more feet closer?
10 or more feet, or 10 or so feet further away from 216 Adair.
Okay, thank you.
For the existing.
Mr. Francisco, did you have a question?
Thank you. Yes, I had a question for our SFB representative. So you were showing the pictures of Plaza Rubio. And do you have any idea what the FARs are for those lots?
Well, you know, this is funny. It's, we get really caught up in all the numbers and stuff, and I purely look at aesthetics. I look at the house, I look at the property, I look at the surroundings, and I say, "How does it experience appropriately for the size and bulk?" I do not know what the FARs of these houses are. I just know that this whole look really works, and that's kind of what we were trying to achieve with this development. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know, but that's why we felt that when you look at four big houses, or, you know, there needs to be some variance, like one's smaller, one's larger. It would be great if they could, like, alternate and push one back, but they can't because of the creek mitigation issue.
Right. So was there anything that you provided to the applicant in terms of direction that was?
I knew you should say that. This was kind of the direction we were looking at. The red lines are what we were recommending for the sizes of the houses. We felt that this house, the one right next to San Remo, should have a little less massing against the street, and, you know, just a minor reduction to this house. And then this one over here, a little more sympathetic with the adjacent neighbor here. We were kind of going in that direction.
Is this something that you provided to the applicant? This drawing?
I don't think so. I do not think so.
Okay.
No.
What's the difference between what's being proposed today and the red line that you have there with Lot 2? Because that's the item before us today.
Yeah, that's the, it was, you know, I don't know. I couldn't give you specifics on exactly what the square footage issue was.
Because it looks pretty darn close, right?
Yeah, it looks close. And I have to say also, let me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
That there were several members on our board that felt that what he had done was fine as well. So this is not a unanimous agreement on our board in terms of the size of that house.
Right, and I guess just to follow up with Mr. Francisco's questioning, was there a magic number that was given to the applicant to say, "Reduce it by X amount"? Or was it, okay, just reduce size, and it did over time, and now we're here where we are?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller, very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move to the applicant, and actually, I neglected to ask, and I'm going to ask my council members as you're getting up, Mr. Goran, if anyone's had any ex parte communications with anyone regarding this project beyond the site visit and emails. Mr. Rouse?
Yes, I ran into Mr. Goran in a casual setting, and we did chat about this briefly, but nothing substantial.
Okay. And Mr. Francisco.
Madam Mayor, I haven't had any ex parte conversations with any of the actors here, but I did, I just wanted to point out, I was unable to go to the site visit yesterday, but I did visit the site today and walked it, so.
Great, thank you. And Mr. White.
And Madam Mayor, likewise, I didn't, haven't had any ex parte, and I did visit the site today.
Great, Mr. Hotchkiss.
And I also did, knocked on two doors and went in backyards on my own, as well as was there yesterday.
Okay, and Mr. Hart?
Same thing, no ex parte, and did the site visit myself today.
Okay, no ex parte and site visit yesterday as well for me. All right, with that, you have up to 30 minutes, and thank you very much. If you could state your name for the record to start, then off you go.
What's going on here?
We're just transferring over, so I'll start the clock when you get started.
It was all set up. There we go.
There you go, okay.
All right. I'm Jarrett Goran from Vanguard Planning, and I represent the appellant, which is Capital Pacific Development Group on this. And we've been through a lot of hearings on this. We've been through five hearings at Single Family Design Board, and in the end, it seemed pretty obvious that there was this one last issue that we were just never going to reach an agreement on, and at that point, it seemed appropriate to bring it to your council. So that's why we appealed it, and that's why we're here today. I want to start by talking about the Single Family Residents' Design Guidelines, because we hear a lot of sort of very loosey-goosey things from Single Family Design Board, but the city's got very specific adopted guidelines that that board is supposed to use and that all city boards really look at when they're looking at these types of things. Neighborhood compatibility, it's discussed right up front in there, and basically, the first thing it says is that if the volume and bulk are at an appropriate scale with the neighbors, that's the concept of neighborhood compatibility. It doesn't address square footage statistics. It talks about things you can see, volume and bulk. And then it talks about size, but I'll cover that a little bit later, but I'm asserting that that size means size you can see. Is it big? Is it small? It doesn't mean, is it 2,800 square feet? People can't see 2,800 square feet. Then it sets this sort of, you know, litmus test. Projects, if they're 85% or less of the maximum square footage, that's sort of the, that's the litmus test for compatibility. You're most likely to be compatible if you're that or less, and that's what that says right there. 85% of the maximum. And FAR is the primary tool that this board in the past, and even recently, uses to evaluate, at least what they've used to evaluate other projects besides this one. FAR is mentioned constantly throughout these guidelines. There's relatively few places where it even talks about just square footage on its own. I'll cover one of them later. In talking about FAR, this is a really good paragraph about why this is the primary tool and why it's such a good tool, okay? And right off the bat, it measures, it limits a structure's size based on its lot size. It acknowledges upfront that when you have a larger lot, you can put larger structures on a larger lot with less impacts than if you try to cram a really big structure onto a really small lot. So it's the relationship between lot size and house size matters. It's significant. FARs provide parameters for lot build-out according to lot size, and this is the primary tool for measuring neighborhood compatibility, at least in the adopted guidelines that the city intends for this board to use when it evaluates projects. And if you follow the city's FAR guidelines, it can avoid these dramatic changes, and I think it's proved out to do that successfully with lots of projects. So projects that are 85% or less, they're generally presumed compatible. That's why they have far lower application standards. There's a whole lot of other standards that apply to other ones that are more than 85, and I'll cover those later. Let's look at the neighborhood. Staff went through, I have some other pictures, so we won't be rehashing the exact same things. That's our neighborhood. This is San Remo Drive. That's the project site, and, you know, you can immediately see in this aerial, this is the park over in San Roque. There's huge homes around here. These are, you know, this whole street's characterized by apartments, and then we've got some smaller tract homes back here on the smallest lots in the neighborhood, which are around 7,500 square feet. This is the approved subdivision. It was approved in August by the Planning Commission. It was previously approved in 2010 by the Planning Commission. We had to go back because we made some minor changes, and all of the comments I'm seeing in letters to the council about this project having to do with parking issues, overdevelopment of the neighborhood, you know, fire access, these are all issues related to the subdivision. And every single one of these issues was brought up specifically in front of the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission heard those issues, and the Planning Commission approved the subdivision unanimously, and nobody appealed that. If people thought that these concerns hadn't been addressed adequately, they had the right to appeal it to your council for you to look at it. That's how our administrative process works, and it wasn't appealed. It is now final and non-appealable. We are Lot 2 in the subdivision to the interior. So let's take a look at what's around the subdivision, because you can't really see Lot 2, so we'll just talk about what's around the project as a whole. This is next door to us on San Remo Drive. This is what you would experience if you were walking through the neighborhood. If you go across the street, we've got this, the Villa Sycamore, all two stories. That's a tiny portion of it, because there's just no way to fit the whole project in a frame unless it's an aerial photo. Right next door to that, we've got this condominium project, again, large, two-story structures clustered far more closely than anything we're proposing to do. And then if you go up San Ontare Road, you start to get to these large lots, which they're adjacent to us, but they also back onto the creek. But here, I thought I'd show a one-story house, and that's a 3,000-square-foot house right there. I'll cover this a little bit more, but I think this makes a good point as to how, you know, the way people see a house, square footage on its own doesn't really tell you a whole hell of a lot. So that's our neighborhood. It isn't just one type of house. It's not all little tract houses on 7,000-square-foot lots. It's a whole lot of different things. And if you want to see how we fit into it, that's our project. And again, not to beat a dead horse, but yes, that house is the existing residence, and this proposed Lot 2 house is about 10 feet further away from, I'll say our property line, not the house, but it's set back 10 feet further from our property line with those houses than the existing house is. So we're not crowding it, we're not getting any closer to it, and really, that's a function of the driveway, taking it away from the creek and putting in a new driveway here, which it's a big spatial buffer. Here's a rendering that shows what that driveway would look like. That's the existing house next door to us. That's our property line. And then this is a photo rendering of the Lot 4 residence. It's not what we're talking about here today, but we did this in part of our review with Single Family Design Board, and that's the impact to the neighborhood. I think it fits in well with the neighborhood, but that's my opinion. Here's another rendering. This is, I guess this would be the worst-case view of this project from anywhere on the ground, and that's like getting the worst possible angle down the driveway and trying to see the front of every house. And these were also slightly earlier designs of these houses. They haven't been reduced through the five hearings we've been through, like the one you're going to see today. So let's talk about this one. That's what the applicant started with back in January. Full two-story mass, 3320 square feet. And let's compare that to what we've got now. The square footage has been reduced, roughly the equivalent of a whole bedroom's been lopped off, 200 square feet and change. But more importantly than the square feet is this huge change in the mass and the bulk of the house. It's been significantly reduced. This is a big area where, you know, the whole section of the second floor was deleted, and then the entire ridge line, which is one of the elements of any house that contributes to its perceived size, is, that's been reduced significantly. I think we're down to 22 feet now in height?
Yes.
About 22 feet tall. That's much shorter than an average two-story house, which is usually around 26 to 28. Here's all four elevations of the house. I mean, you wonder why we're here on an appeal. I mean, this is just a very, you know, it's a not very large two-story house with good massing and proportions and beautiful design elements, and this is on a 14,000-square-foot So let's look at the lot, because where this house is is equally as important as to what it looks like just looking at the house on its own. We're Lot 2 of the subdivision, and it's all the way to the interior of this lot. And I'll make the streets a little bit more visible. One of the things that the design guidelines say, when they're talking about neighborhood, one of the primary characteristics of a neighborhood is the streets that you primarily drive through it on and experience it from. And those streets in our area are San Remo, obviously, and North Ontare Road's the other major through street. And these are where people experience the neighborhood from, and of course, this is dominated visually by these large apartment and condo projects. And then this street's characterized by really large lots with fairly large homes on them, including really large one-story homes, but a lot, there's two-story homes there, too, and they're all large. The photo down the street, you almost can't see any structures because of the setbacks, but they're all there, and you can see them in this photo. Then we've got these secondary streets, which are actually back on the project. So we've got Adair Drive over here and Capri Drive here, and these were all done at the same time in a similar tract, and they're all sort of on 7,400-square-foot lots with your typical tract homes. They are all developed pretty much setback to setback, side to side, and touching the front setbacks. So let's look at this a little bit more closely here. All right, we're on an interior lot. This isn't visible from the street. We're 190 feet from the street. The view of this house is blocked by the existing residents on Lot 3 and the rebuilt residents on Lot 3, and Landmarks Commission approved that residence, and it's got final design and final approval. It's a 3,200-square-foot home. One of the council asked, what did they approve? What they approved is a 3,200-square-foot two-story home, similarly, similar architecture to what we're talking about today, and they made every one of the same findings that the Single Family Design Board says it can't make. And that approval was in October. Again, all these same neighbors who claimed that the square footage is inappropriate in this case, none of them appealed that or complained about that, yet it's the same size in the same location in same size, in the same location, in the same neighborhood. On this side, we're blocked by vegetation in the creek corridor. Over here, all the views are blocked by these existing homes on Adair. And then up here, we're blocked by existing homes on Capri. So it's getting repetitive, but, you know, you see a pattern here. Every view of this lot is blocked by something. That's where the house sits. And it's not visible from anywhere. I mean, it's got a solid perimeter of obstacles to seeing it all the way around it. Now, we were asked to do story polls for this house. It meets none of the city's criteria for doing story polls, and it can't be seen from anywhere. But the appellant went and did them anyway. And let's take a look at what they look like. Here's the view I'm going to show you. It's right along that arrow. And it's right across this house on Adair Drive. And there's the house. Here's the story polls. It's, you can't really see anything there, so I'll blow it up. And you still can't really see anything. So that's, there's our neighborhood impact that you perceive from the neighborhood. And I don't even think we have that anymore, because that's before we lowered the roofline of the house to what it is now. But let's say that's our impact. I think it's hard to say that's a significant neighborhood impact. And if it is, I think people in Santa Barbara need to reevaluate, you know, what they can develop. Here's a section along that same line, and staff showed you pretty much the same thing. So I'll just go through it. But basically, we've got a very large separation between homes here, larger than what you find in the adjacent neighborhood. And we've got screening items that are going in, both existing and proposed, along this line, to make sure that there's no views directly into that house or the backyard. And this is what your guidelines require. That's why we're doing this. There's good neighbor guidelines that require all these things. And so that's why, you know, we're doing all these things. So I'm going to let Henry Lenny talk really briefly. He did these elevations, and I'll let him address you really quick here on a couple of things from the design board.
Henry Lenny, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The team really looked at some of the comments that the Single Family Board made. And indeed, we significantly reduced the size, bulk, and scale of the buildings. Not only that, we switched to making all the structures a lot more traditional. We simplified it significantly. And rather than having arcades in front of the houses, we were proposing on putting trees, very much like you would see in some of the 1920s neighborhoods. And so staff mentioned that I made an attempt to look at square footage and reduce the house. I did. And I came up with 240-something square feet. But it only made a difference in the width of the house of nine inches. But it was devastating for the floor plan. And that is the equivalent of two bedrooms. And so we just said, it's not worth it. It's the size, bulk that matters. And we did. And one of the questions I believe Mr. Hutchins you had, whether the houses were lower than the historic house, they are. And one of the graphics that Brian showed, showed that. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. Okay, so let's look at neighborhood compatibility. Here's a page out of the adopted guidelines, and this is the 85% thing. And this time, I'm underlining the other part of it. These are subject to standard application requirements. Okay? Again, it's that litmus test. If you're 85% or less, you're sort of presumed compatible, and you just do the standard Here's what you do if you're over 85%. This whole list of things down here. Okay? There's special additional processing requirements for homes that are bigger than 85%. This is the one that's most frequently done, and we did that in this case. This is our site. Here's where the house sits. Here's the 20 closest homes. I want to talk really quickly about something. The opponents of this project keep coming to hearings and presenting a neighborhood compatibility study and the findings from that study. And this is their study. They use all these lots over here. This is our site right here. I mean, there's all this stuff going on over here, but these are the lots they picked. They cherry-picked lots, which are all the smallest lots in the neighborhood, so that it'll alter the results that they come up with. They don't have garage sizes included in their square footages. And they're calculating FARs based on custom formulas. So like in our case, they just take the square footage of the building envelope rather than the lot. And of course, it makes our FAR look a lot bigger than it really is, based on how the city calculates it. So our study's based on the way the city does it and using the adopted standards and formulas the city uses. Here's our study on the city's standard spreadsheet. And here we are. It's the same thing staff just showed you. We're just slightly under the average, .22, and the average is 2.4. And we're 74% of the maximum that's allowed. And again, 85% or less, generally, you're presumed to be compatible. We're full 10% under that. Many existing neighborhoods, they've got older homes with small floor plans and obsolete floor plans for today's modern designs. And the Single Family Design Board regularly approves houses that have larger square footage than the homes in the surrounding neighborhood. Staff had, I thought, a brilliant write-up on this, where they basically said, well, what if this house we have was on a 7,000-square-foot lot, like a typical 7,000-square-foot lot? And we'd come in around 87%, and they say that, you know, houses of this size are generally found acceptable. And they are. The Single Family Design Board approves houses of this size all the time in neighborhoods like this. We talked about this Anacapa project. I think Brian showed you the most unflattering picture possible of it, but that board did approve this unanimously. He was on it. Fred was on it. Everybody was on it. This is my project, by the way. So it was, I had a ready example to go here. Here's what we're talking about here. We've got a 7,500-square-foot lot with 3,800-square-foot house. It was 125% of the FAR in that case. But it was an interior lot, and they took all this into consideration. It was a .51. The average for the neighborhood was .32. The average square footage in the neighborhood was 2,900. And this project compared to that was 1.28. So it's about 30% bigger than the homes in the surrounding neighborhood. And here's what the house looks like, 84 feet wide. And just, let's look at how that compares to, they approved that house and said that was compatible. And then this is our house, that they find the size and the bulk compatible, or that the bulk and the scale compatible, but not the square footage statistic. Our house is 30% larger, so, you know, basically, it's exactly the same situation. And unlike the other example that the board approved unanimously, we're 10% under the So here's one of the few places that the guidelines do talk about square footage. These are the examples they give of 85% lot FAR. And here's an existing neighborhood example of 1,300. And here's a 85% target example of 2,083. Okay? If you look at the size differential between the examples in the adopted design guidelines, this target house, the one people are encouraged to pursue, is 60% bigger than the square footage of the surrounding neighborhood houses in the city's adopted examples. Okay? We're 30% larger. I think we're well within the range of being compatible with that. So let's look at the denial. Here's the findings. And really, the only one we're talking about is this one, compatibility. And this is the exact same finding that the HLC made, wanted to approve the 3,200-square-foot house next door to this. Compatible with the neighborhood and its size, bulk, and scale, and appropriate to the site and neighborhood. Okay? Now here's the finding. Now, first of all, let's look at the first part, which didn't get mentioned here. They denied this because we were just unwilling to just reduce the square footage ad hoc, as directed, and we didn't feel we needed to do that. Then they say that they approved the massing and the scale, but not the size. Now, when Brian kept talking here, every single time he talked about this today, I said, he said, "size, bulk, and scale." Okay? But that is not what the Single Family Design Board said. They approved the bulk and the scale, and they denied it based on the square footage statistic on its own. Okay? Well, that's a meaningless statistic on its own. Staff alluded to this. They said it's difficult to perceive it. You can't perceive it. People don't have a sign in front of their house that says 2,000 square feet. You look at the house, you perceive the size of the house. Okay? Square footage matters because of how it gets distributed. And let's, let me show you what I mean. Okay? So here's, here's two houses right next to each other on the same street. Okay? And here we got a 4,300-square-foot house, and here's a 3,100-square-foot house. How can that be? I mean, they look identical. Well, they aren't identical. They're on the same-sized lots. They have the same setbacks. Okay? But the home that's on Lot A, this one, it's 37% larger than that one, yet they look exactly the same from the street. And that's because square footage on its own really makes no difference to how something looks, depending on where it's distributed. Like, you each have basements. I mean, it's, you don't know with the square footage of houses. You know, not only are these compatible with each other, they're identical, to oversimplify this concept. Now, here's what we're really talking about in our case. We have stuff that you can't even see the house. It's surrounded by trees and buildings. So, I mean, now you really can't tell the difference. So size, bulk, and scale is sort of a unified concept. It's not three separate things. And even if it is, size is how it looks. Is it big or is it small? We're not talking about the square footage that's printed on plans that are going to end up in the city archives, buried somewhere. We're talking about what you can see. And if the massing and scale of a house is compatible, as the Single Family Design Board found this to be, there's no way that square footage in isolation can make it incompatible. And that's even more critical in case where you can't see the house. Okay? So in conclusion, they didn't review this project consistent with the adopted guidelines and ordinances. They applied unique and arbitrary standards to this project. And they didn't state a basis in, like, showing Plaza Rubio. I mean, Plaza, everybody likes Plaza Rubio. It's like asking if you like puppies. I show Plaza Rubio when I'm trying to get projects approved. But this isn't Plaza Rubio. Plaza Rubio faces a public park or an interior lot that you can't see. There's no evidence in the administrative record that supports their action to deny the residence. And it was a big departure from what they usually do when they look at houses. There is substantial evidence that proves this is consistent with all applicable policies, ordinances, and guidelines. So we respectfully ask that your council uphold this appeal and approve the project.
Thank you. You have 6 minutes and 43 seconds left, should you need it after public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, we'll go to public comment. So I'll have two minutes here up at the podium. And we'll start with Peter Edwards, if you'd like to come on up, to be followed by Shirley
Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor, members of the board. I have one or two or three serious objections to this project. One is on the... Do you have a picture of the development as planned?
I'm sorry, what did you? You can just tell, give us your statement, because we've been, we've seen...
No, of the total project.
I think that was what was just shown. There you go. There's all four.
My objection was that you see the three, the four proposed buildings. They're big. They're separated by less than 20 feet. Each one is crowding the total development on the available land. Available land, not the total land. A driveway is proposed to service these four houses, two-story houses. It is so tight on this property that actually, the turn-in area to get to the two-car garages of each unit is so crowded that I don't think it's possible. Architecturally, it's nicely done, but it's done in the wrong place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley Edwards will be followed by Bob Westwick.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Shirley Edwards. Peter and I live at 216 Adair Drive. Lot 2 is directly behind our house. We feel that this entire development is too large, too dense for the size of the buildable property. You have to consider that the street sign says 1.3 acres, not 1.5, 1.3. And there is a 45-foot setback from the creek, which means that everything is moved east of the creek and borders very tightly the houses on Adair. Not just our house, all four houses, from San Remo to the end of the cul-de-sac. It was mentioned that there were story polls put up. That was our house that they showed, garage door up. They took the picture from the street, and they said the impact was insignificant. The reason it looks insignificant is because the property has been, has not been maintained. It is a litter, literally a jungle back there, and it's a real fire trap. You couldn't see a story pole from the street, but if you would, if they would have taken the picture in our backyard, you would see it looming over our house. We use our backyard all the time. You will find, as you age, you don't travel. You stay home, and you enjoy your house and your yard. We're going to have people looking into our yard. And I would hope that you would consider this. I know many of you were there yesterday. Some of you have not heard of this project before. We've been following it for months, going to the meetings. And the Single Family Dwelling Board is not in favor of the size of these dwellings. In fact, they refer to it as McMansion Row.
Yes, wind up, please.
I realize that the larger houses are more profitable when they're sold. But I would ask you to please consider the quality of life for the already established neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Westwick will be followed by John Steen, and then the final speaker will be Molly Steen.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Bob Westwick, and I live at 3609 Capri Drive, right on the north side of Lot 1 there. My feeling is that by bringing Lot 2 before you today, it's a clever strategy, actually, is my opinion, because the SFB has been considering the total project up until the last meeting before Lot 2 was brought in on its own. And it's the entire project. Mr. Goran is a little confused as to why the neighbors... We have a list of 20 neighbors who oppose this project. He's a little confused as to why we object to it. We don't object to the rebuilding of the historical structure. That's been there for 80 years. Why would we object to that? That's why we didn't show up to that meeting. What we object to is the fact that there will be four homes, as Mrs. Edwards alluded to, that have been referred to by the SFB as McMansions. The four homes that are all two-story, 30% larger than the surrounding neighborhood. And it's the impact of that. I live to the north of Lot 1. I realize that's not on the plate today. I had another SFB member, when they did the site visit of the entire project, who made a comment. I overheard her say, "I wouldn't want to live in that house," pointing to my house, "with that large, two-story structure." So it's difficult. You have a difficult task... You have a difficult task before you, I understand that, to really take one lot, in my opinion, out of context to the entire project. I, I don't know how it's going to be resolved, but I would just ask you, the S F D B has spent eight or nine months, spending a lot of hours, and mulling this over. They have consistently stated that it's too big, it is not compatible. They know what they can see. Square footage may not be a reliable statistic, but what you can see is, and you, it will be able to see, four two-story homes. It's too big. Thank you.
John Steen.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is John Steen. I'm a co-owner at 3609 Capri Drive, and I would like to cover about four issues on the neighborhood preservation list. The first one is consistency and appearance. Well, in the 20 lots that have been alluded, or displayed here, there are only three two-story houses. One is really on a one-and-a-half stories. So, now we got over twice as many four, two-story houses. And they're in close proximity, which you've heard over and over and over again. And the parking issue is there because of the lack of parking spaces to the houses. Second issue is compatib... I'm sorry. Second issue is safety. We understand that the fire department has approved no turnaround on the driveway, but still, a lot of us are nervous about that, and so it's a concern to us. The next is the good neighbor guidelines. Again, the proximity, the privacy issue, and something that hasn't been mentioned before, that there's provisions for machinery at each of these houses, one of which is an air conditioning and heating unit. But we have no idea what the noise of those things are going to come out to, whether they'll be under the 60 dB, or whatever the number is now. So, that's a concern. Lastly, is the compatibility issue. I did my own 20, 20-lot study, but I had to use only house sizes because I couldn't get garage sizes from the counterassessors database. And I used the buildable area, or as the staff calls it, the developable area. So, if you do that, the FAR for the Lot 2 comes out to about .6, rather than about the .2 or so of the average throughout the 20 lots.
You need to wind up, please.
Yes, and the... I think I could just quit there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Steen will be followed by Edward DeVincent.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Molly Steen, and I live immediately to the north of Lot 1. I urge the City Council to uphold the Single Family Design Board's denial of the project. This case has arrived on your doorstep because the appellant refuses to accept that the house they propose is too big for the neighborhood. That's it. Others have spoken about the specifics of too big, so I won't go there. The appellant wants to build what they want to build, and they have manufactured elaborate arguments about why their project has been denied. Their arguments cherry pick comments from discussions about the four-lot project, selecting items that, out of context, do appear to support their contention that the hearings have been biased. Having attended each of those hearings and having taken notes throughout, I believe that if, if any of you were able to watch those videos of the hearings, it's highly unlikely that you would reach the same conclusions as the appellant. Lot number 2 is what we're talking about today, but it will set a precedent for the remainder of the development. As my husband, Bob, said, it's been selected because it seems to have the least impact on the neighborhood. However, it truly is the linchpin for the development. Because there are three other, or two additional homes in addition to Lot 2 going to be, proposed to be built, this really will change the feel of the neighborhood, not just from San Remo, not just from Montero, those main roads, but for the residents who live in that neighborhood. There are people who have come out in favor of this project so far. They have been the seller, her real estate agent, and the appellant. All of those people are going to financially benefit from this, take their money, and be gone. On the other hand, we have 20 people who are opposing the project. Their names have been presented to you. Some of these neighbors have taken their time to write letters, attend hearings, and so forth. All of these opponents will remain to contend the fallout, contend with the fallout, the noise, trouble parking, and reduced privacy. We're not opposed to anything being built on that lot, as the appellant has suggested. We are, however, opposed to the proposed homes that are too big for the neighborhood. I urge you to uphold the denial of the Single Family Design Board and turn the appellant back to the drawing board. Thank you.
And then Edward DeVincent.
Madam Mayor and council members, Edward DeVincent, architect with DMHA. I'm here to speak in support of the project and provide my observations to the broader issues that this appeal brings up. Although I've done work with the applicant's team in the past, I'm not involved in this project. This community has spent much time in developing the Single Family Design Guidelines, and landowners and design, the design community's been working with these guidelines to bring projects forward for a better residential Santa Barbara. The process that this project has gone through has strayed from the intent of those guidelines, and that the project is before you demonstrates issues with the Single Family Design Board and the filters that are being applied to projects. The applicant has gone to great lengths to demonstrate conformance with the guidelines, and staff supports this project. I recommend that council and staff work with the board to advise them on procedures to more fairly, consistently, and in a balanced way to review these projects, one where personal anecdotes and personal feelings are set aside to make NPO findings. The personal comments create confusion even amongst the board members and provide unclear direction back to the design team and landowners. It's my hope that with council's redirection and staff support, we can return to a more constructive S F D B process. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the final speaker, and we do have the list of opponents here, which I'll hand to the clerk, and I know we got a number of emails from them. Okay, to the appellant, you have up to 6 minutes and 43 seconds, should you need it. Hold on just a second. Okay, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I guess I'll remind the council, and maybe this was more of a reminder to our neighbors, that projects aren't approved or denied in the city of Santa Barbara by how many tick marks you have in the, you know, supporter or opponent column. We review projects in this city based on our adopted guidelines and our ordinances, and whether projects are consistent with those things. Development in Santa Barbara is certainly not a popularity contest. So, to address a couple of things that were said, you know, this available land concept, look, I mean, let's come up with whatever definition we want to, you know, calculate FARs by. I'll come up with a new definition where we actually include adjacent lots, and then our FAR will look even better. Or we can be like the neighbors and come up with a definition where we subtract whole parts of an existing lot and say, "Well, you really can't count those because you can't build on them." Well, I mean, if these lots didn't have the constraints, you could have a house this big on it, and it would have the same impact in terms of how it would look based on the size of its lot. And that's what an FAR is. It evaluates the size of a house in relationship to the size of its lot. And there's no difference between us having a creek back there, or us having a lawn back there, in terms of how these houses look, and whether the square footage is appropriate for the lots. You know, the fact that you can see this out of somebody's backyard, I think that's arguable, based on the landscaping, but let's just, for argument's sake, say it's not. The city is not in the business of preserving individuals' private views, and that's actually what the chairperson of the Single Family Design Board said he was most concerned about in this case, a private view of Mr. Edwards. That's not their job. And, you know, just because somebody enjoys their backyard doesn't mean their neighbor is now denied the right to develop what they can develop under the city's adopted rules. Also, that we're, you know, putting something forward surreptitiously in a clever way. The reason this is here, this house had the most positive out of all the comments, and so this was taken to move forward through S F D B, so it reached the end of the road with S F D B sooner, and that's why it's here. So, let's be clear. We have a four-lot subdivision. Yes, we're proposing three houses, including this one. They are all two-stories. They are all roughly 30% larger in square footage than these homes in the 20 closest lot study, and every single one of them is entirely consistent with every single requirement the city has for it, and in fact, well under most of those requirements. That applies to FAR. We're 10% under. Setbacks, everything. I don't see why special additional standards apply to this applicant that don't apply to others. And that's another thing, too. We keep hearing about who the applicant is and what their motivation is. We don't look at who applicants are. The city boards should be blind to the applicant. They should be able to, except for their exhibits, present from behind a curtain. And it doesn't matter who they are or why they're doing a project. The city has ordinances and guidelines that spell out its goals, and applicants try to work to develop projects that are within those goals, and the boards are supposed to evaluate those projects objectively against those goals. And that didn't happen even remotely in this case. And I'd say you could watch those videos and come away with a completely different opinion than, respectfully, Mrs. Steen thinks you'd come away with. Everybody I know that's looked at them had a very different opinion. The mechanical equipment, I don't even know what to say about that. I mean, that's a normal thing that every house has, and if anything, anything these houses are going to have is going to be the newest, quietest version of whatever it is, compared to what else is out there in the neighborhood. What else can we throw up here to see if we can confuse you on the project? I can't think of anything else. Look, this project's consistent with everything. The house is, all the houses are, the whole subdivision is. The Planning Commission doesn't, you know, lightly approve subdivisions, and they approved this one unanimously, after hearing every single one of the same comments you just heard today. And they don't take them lightly. They consider them. I'm not saying the comments are irrelevant, but they carefully considered it, and based on an objective evaluation of this project with respect to the city's standards, which are the rules that apply to us, not special rules that the Single Family Design Board makes up because of, you know, whether they like the applicant or not. Based on the rules that the city has, that the Planning Commission evaluates objectively, they approved the whole subdivision, and they heard all the same stuff. I think it's absolutely clear what your actions should be today, and that should be to uphold this appeal, because we followed the rules as best we could, and we're well within them, and we're well within our rights, and I think that the evidence that's in the administrative record conclusively, it can't lead you to any other conclusion than that. So, we respectfully request that you uphold the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, so now it's to the council. Mr. Rouse.
I have a question for Mr. Goran, if I may. You brought up earlier the landscaping and the screening. It was a concern of the Edwards property, and I have to admit that I, I did appreciate the comments from Mrs. Edwards about the jungle, the current jungle that's there, and it was hard for me, actually, to see on the slide the story poles, or what you guys had erected. Can you review for us one more time the planned landscaping that you proposed for the project? Is that stolen?
Madam Mayor...
It was a point that you actually brought up, so...
Yeah, we don't have a full landscape plan in our presentation today. I think staff has one, though, that shows most of it.
I think it was one of the slides you may have referred to earlier.
I think this is representative. It's far less detailed, but Robert Adams is our landscape architect. He couldn't be here today. He's a really good landscape architect, and what we've got going on, basically, we've got trees all over the property, and the buildings are sited to avoid impacts to most of the oak trees. There was only a couple trees that were affected, and those are all mitigated down here in the creek. And then we're transplanting a bunch of oak trees to other locations on the site. So, we're able to use existing large oak trees and other types of trees we have on the site, in addition with new plantings, to create in-place screening almost immediately upon completion of the project. So, that's, I'm not a landscape architect, but that's, that's pretty much how our landscape plan works. It's basically perimeter screening specifically to address privacy and view issues, and then transplanting and restoration of this creek corridor is where there's a huge focus on that, too.
The intent of your development.
That's the intent, and we'll continue to work on that. And what we said on the site visit, talking with some neighbors afterwards, and I'll say it on the record here, if there's like a specific view, like if somebody says, "Look, my deck's here, that house is there, you know, I can, I really want something in that, right on that view," we're perfectly happy and willing to put something in right there on that view. We don't want to upset the neighbors. We want to have a good project and have it fit in, and if somebody can point to something that's very specific that we might even not even be able to see until the project's built, we'll come back afterwards and put it in. So, I'm saying that on the record right here, and if we don't do it, you guys can talk to me about it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's up to Mr. Rouse.
Please, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Earlier this month, we met with the landscape architect specifically to deal with how we're going to screen that driveway. There was something proposed at the time, and we've decided that we were going to use London plane trees in combination with oaks in order to, in order to provide full screening, but not to block the sun. In addition to that, we agreed to move the fence closer to save some existing oak trees that were there, and this is just quite recently done because we were concerned about the comments that were made about the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lanning.
Okay. Mr. Hart?
Well, just going down that path a little bit further, were you proposing, you know, box trees of a certain size as part of this?
Most of the trees are going to be transplanted, especially the oaks. There is a huge advantage to doing that. The oaks are already acclimated to this area. Part of the difficulty with moving oaks is that you bring them from a different location. It could be from Montecito, but the microclimate is different. So, the idea is to, is to save the significant trees, box them, and replant them again.
But the additional trees that you mentioned, will those also be box-sized trees of a certain...
There would be significant box-sized trees. I would, I can guess at the moment, but I would say there will probably be anywhere from 12 to 24 brown trunk sizes, and whatever the box is, is going to be.
Okay, thank you.
You want to continue with your comments, or was that just a question for now? Okay. Mr. Francisco?
Question from Mr. Gullett first. You mentioned, or someone mentioned, guest parking in a revision of the Planning Commission direction. What, what exactly happened there?
Madam Chair Commissioner, Francisco, this, this issue arose from the neighbors at Single Family Design Board and Historic Landmarks Commission, so it was considered further by staff and by the Planning Commission, and everyone thought it was a good idea to include guest parking. Historic Landmarks Commission didn't support guest parking on Lot 3 because there's an existing oak tree here, and there really isn't room for it, so that's why it was just a requirement of the other three lots.
And how much guest parking per lot?
One guest parking space, so a total of three spaces on 1, 2, and 4.
Okay, thank you. So, obviously, there are a lot of issues, and this has been discussed for a long time. I did watch the videos of the Single Family Design Board hearings on this, and one of the things that I'll say right from the start that I think was unfortunate about those hearings was there seemed to be a fair amount of tension right from the beginning, and that's unfortunate, that there was that sort of feeling in the room. That's what I perceived. But one of the, one of the things that's happened here is, if you look at this, and this, this plot map here is a good way of illustrating it. So, the design standards in the city have changed considerably over the decades, and that driveway is being proposed there on the far left because of what the city has decided to do to protect creeks. And had this project been developed 25 years ago, those houses would probably be considerably further from Adair Drive than they are. But that's not the reality that we're dealing with. We're dealing with design guidelines that were meant to protect the creek, and... We're dealing with design guidelines that were meant to protect the creek, and those are the constraints that the builder's operating under. I also would say that if you look at the lots, can you put up the picture that had the aerial photograph with? Yeah, that's good. So look just to the left of the project. Those are the houses on Adair Drive. And those houses are pretty close together. Now granted, they're not two-story, but those existing houses are very close, much closer to each other than they are to any of the houses in the project. I realize, of course, a two-story house is going to have a bigger impact than a one-story house. No question about it. And we also saw some examples that that development on 1700 Anacapa is incredible. I mean, those houses are packed so closely together. This is less tight than that project on Anacapa. And it's certainly, the scale of these houses is larger than that of most of the houses in the immediate neighborhood. No question about it. On the other hand, they do fit within the guidelines that the city has established for development. Now, I realize, you know, there is a question in my mind whether the F A Rs really should apply to, for instance, land that's in the creek. That's an open question. However, it's not a question that we can talk about today because the F A R guidelines that we're dealing with are the ones that exist, the ones that the builder is conforming with in this property. There's also no question in my mind that these houses, this project as a whole, is denser than it would have been in the old Santa Barbara days. No question about it. And that's partly a function of the incredible value of land in this city and how that value has increased over time. One of the things that I was favorably impressed with with this project, Mr. Lenny's intervention in terms of the architectural design, I think, improved this project enormously. What we saw in the original elevations was not very inspired. The design that Mr. Lenny has created here, I think, is as close to being compatible as you could hope to find with the original Edward and Plunkett's house on this property, as close as you could hope to find in a new development. So I think that's a real advantage, and I thank Mr. Lenny for his contribution. And again, I absolutely understand the concerns and the objections of the neighbors, the influence that these larger homes will undoubtedly have on their ambiance. I absolutely get that. But what we as a city council here really need to focus on is, do these houses conform to the existing zoning and the existing design guidelines that the city has? I believe that they do. I really can't find any variance here whatsoever. There's no request for modification, and all of the constraints that the builder is operating under are constraints that were really forced on him by our guidelines for preserving the creeks. So again, I understand the neighbors' concerns, but in terms of our actual guidelines, and these are the only things that we can go on when we look at a project like this and when we look at an appeal, these houses, and in particular, the one that's before us today, conform to everything in the zoning and the design guidelines. One of the reasons I asked Mr. Miller about what kind of specific direction he gave to the applicant was, well, if you're saying we want it to be smaller, well, what exactly do you want? How much smaller? And what's the rationale behind that? And Mr. Miller couldn't provide that. Now, my theory about that is that he's a designer, and he senses that this is a very large, dense development. But again, well within the city's guidelines. So I believe that we should uphold the appeal, and I hope that as further development continues within this project, that we will see sensitive design, variance in design so that each house is not identical, and something that we can be proud of in association with the existing Edwards and Plunkett Historic Landmark House. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I appreciate Mr. Francisco's comments. I have a different view, which comes out of my experience on working on the Planning Commission. But first of all, this property, starting, was a leftover of a larger developed, a larger development. And I think it's a leftover for a reason. It was a leftover because of the creek, because it's a constrained piece of property. And I think that Capital Pacific did an excellent job of taking it on. And I'm grateful that it didn't get developed then because I think the creek does benefit from, and now we're investing lots of money in our creek system, trying to clean it up and trying to make it more of a living being, which so many of our creeks have just gotten trashed, particularly in that era, in the 50s, when people just paved them and built up too close to them and so forth. So we got something out of that change of policy that Mr. Francisco was speaking to. And I also, I have to say, Mr. Garn, you do such a fabulous job with your presentations. You know how to use those PowerPoint quiz bangs better than just about anybody that we get to see here. You really do a fine job, and also bringing in perhaps more information than we can absorb. But definitely, you hit, you know, you grind on the policies and show us what we've created in the way of a set of legal restrictions and so forth. And definitely, it's a hard avenue to find your way through. I think the place where I would disagree with the applicant and the appellant, should I say, is in the area of the second floor. And this is the battle that I lost in the neighborhood, in the NPO discussion years ago, and where I had lobbied for a floor-area ratio on second floors. I think you could build, just as Mr. Francisco was talking about, that the house, if the ground floor, I just don't think that enters anybody's equation for being a concern. It ends up being the second floors that cause the consternation. And I'm sorry that, and then the notion of wedding cake is kind of the one, and even it was brought in on those very large homes on Anacapa Street, they have a bit more wedding cake to them. So that's what I would be, that would be the element that I would hope would get brought into this, that if the second floor, and also Mr. Lenny's work definitely just took the, made these into a silk purse so much more than the previous design. So that part is really great. But that would be the ingredient. These sites are constrained. Another ingredient that's different here is the access road is a private access road. It's not a street. If it were a street, there'd be a setback. And so that's just an ingredient here that is a quirk of our zoning, where you've got a house that's that far, on a private street that serves four or fewer houses. That doesn't, isn't that right, Mr. Gullett? That doesn't have a setback because it only serves four or more, four or fewer houses?
That's right.
If it served five, then it would be, the first house would then have to be set back 50 feet from the center line. How's my ancient brain doing there? Is that?
That's correct. So the driveway would have to be a private street instead, and it would have to be wider, and it would become a front setback.
And then, as you go in, does it change back to being a driveway as you get, serves only four, or does it stay a street all the way to the end?
It can change to be a driveway depending on how it terminates.
Okay. Anyway, that's an area where, again, this particular project, the houses can be cheek by jowl against the access road, which they couldn't be if this were a street. So that's just another piece of constraint, of unique characteristics here. So the ingredient that I would want out of this would be a bit of wedding caking of the second floors. The F A Rs of the second floor here, the second floors are almost as big as the first floors. And that's what concerns me. And we've had the other discussions about second floors. We've been doing second floors the last couple of months, but they've all been much, they've been more like a master bedroom upstairs rather than a full, in this case, I think there's as many as three bedrooms upstairs on these. And that's the area where I feel that there's, and I even think the bottom floors could be, could be larger, as well as the scale, you know, to get a little volume on some of those rooms. I think they could be a little higher. That wouldn't bother me if they were set back a little bit. So again, that's just leftovers from my Planning Commission days of solutions that I heard some very smart people and skilled people come up with to improve compatibility. And I think that the wedding caking could help that second floor a bit here.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gullett, on what basis does the Single Family Design Board recommend reducing size, bulk, and scale other than neighborhood compatibility?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that's the basic reasoning for reducing size.
Will the second floor here block sunlight or views from the Adair homes?
We do have a solar access limitation. It applies only to the northerly property line. I believe because of the distance from the closest Adair home, it's unlikely to shade that home at all.
Okay, fine. And again, to repeat, this is 10 feet farther than, back than the existing house from the Adair homes.
It's...
Was the second floor on this home moved back at all in the various iterations? It didn't seem to me that it was.
It was not. It's flush with the front of the house.
Okay. Can someone explain to me why the story polls were considered inappropriate? That seemed to be a big issue in the, at the board meeting.
That was a comment made by one of the, one of the Single Family Design Board members. They did a request, story polls for the three lots under review by Single Family Design Board at the same time, and we did a site visit for that. I didn't hear a clear explanation of why they were dissatisfied with those story polls.
Because they were accurate, were they not?
They, we did get a story poll plan that was certified by a surveyor. So we presume that they are accurate.
I went over to the houses on Adair today, and, because it didn't occur to me yesterday as it should have, to look at the project from their backyards, which are really nice, great houses. And I was encouraged by you saying today that these houses are going to be, or this house is going to be 10 feet farther away, because I've had an experience, I've been on both sides of the fence, as it were, on this, where somebody builds a second story, and you have a feeling that you lose privacy, and I wouldn't want that to happen here. So I'm kind of thinking along the lines of, Mr. White, if there's a way that we could approve this appeal with the admonition of two things. A, that there be adequate landscaping in agreement with the neighbors to completely block any questionable sightlines to preserve their privacy. And secondly, to examine if possible, not necessarily decreasing square footage of the house, but to give some setback, and I don't know what the right term is, so that people don't feel the second floor is looming over them. Now, that's a psychological term, you know? So anything up there is going to, for the first month and a half, is going to be like, oh, God. And then after that, it's going to be, it's not so bad. But anyway, that's kind of the direction I am moving in. I don't know if it's possible to make that a motion or not. If I made that a motion, would you all be scratching your heads? Or does, did you understand? You'd be scratching your head.
He's saying yes about scratching his head, I think. So you'd have to decide if this is upholding or denying, and then explain the reason why.
Upholding the appeal with the condition that adequate landscaping be included to the satisfaction of people on the perimeter, Adair and Capri, and that they consider moving the second floors back some, not necessarily changing square footage.
Is there, I see, I looked over, good, yes, please, Mr. Cullon, if you can...
Is the city attorney going to throw me out here?
Yeah, I'm less concerned with the discussion of landscaping than I am with the adjusting the setbacks. Adjusting the setbacks on the second floors would necessarily involve a trip back to the S F D B, and I think you would likely see another appeal from that process.
All right. So let's just stick with the landscaping portion of it.
Right. And then the other challenge there is, of course, the landscaping would entirely be on the applicant's property. In other words, you wouldn't be proposing to have them landscape a neighbor's property.
No, correct.
Can you restate your motion?
That we uphold the appeal with the condition that adequate landscaping be installed on their property to the satisfaction of people of Capri to shield view lines.
Capri and Adair?
Yes, Capri and Adair, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All right. No, well, if there's a council member that wants to ask, if you want to answer a question, go ahead. We'll go with Mr. Francisco first.
So, Mr. Hotchkiss, how, if I understand your motion correctly, this is going to be dependent on the consent of the neighbors, whether their privacy concerns are satisfied or not.
Agreement of the neighbors, yes.
So how are we going to know whether that's true?
I guess, let's ask staff what the process would be. How would you go about following through should this motion pass? What's the process?
Madam Mayor, so from here, this is consideration of project design approval. This project would return to Single Family Design Board for final approval. They would look at things like landscaping. So it's appropriate as part of a project design approval to include conditions on landscaping. It would be helpful to staff if council was more specific on which neighbors should review the landscaping.
Well, let's take the neighbor approval part off and just say that it's adequate to block lines as needed, sightlines.
Adequate to, can you repeat that? Adequate to?
Block, to preserve privacy for both sides, both the people in the project and the people on adjacent properties.
So it's upholding the appeal with the condition that the landscaping on the western edge and the northern edge of the property?
Correct.
Right? Well, actually, we're just looking at Lot 2. So I guess on the western edge would be, would adhere to privacy standards for both the applicant and the neighbor? Is that what you're saying?
Maybe it should just be to have the design review board pay particular attention to the landscaping on this area to provide screening for the neighborhood.
I'm happy with that.
Okay. Thank goodness this is on tape. Okay. All right. So that's what the motion is, and I take it, Mr. Hart, you're okay with seconding what you just offered? Okay. So go ahead, Mr. Hart.
Well, that was what I was going to offer. So the only comment I would have is that it is interesting, this is the third appeal of a second-story home that we have dealt with in the last six weeks or so. Probably won't be the last one. And, you know, to echo the comments that others have made, this is a difficult thing for a neighborhood, particularly when you're looking at a vacant lot, essentially. And so anything in the vacant lot is extremely difficult to absorb and deal with. But I do think these homes are incredibly well-designed. Mr. Lenny's touch, and I don't think anybody even questioned that. This is really a question about the privacy in a backyard, looking out at a new home in a backyard. And I think what we really have focused in on is this landscape screening. Ultimately, if there is adequate trees that grow up into this to provide this protection and this view blockage, then I think this issue goes away because there is no view of these homes essentially from the street, from San Remo. It really is these backyards. And I think, I think that giving direction to the Single Family Design Board to pay particular attention to that aspect of this development is the answer to getting this to work for the neighborhood.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, yeah, this is, like Mr. Hart just said, this is going to be one of those things that every time...
going to be one of those things that every time these happen in established neighborhoods, we're going to be in front of this again. And we, I don't want to see us design, trying to design from the dais, in order I want us, unless we want to really re-approach the entire FAR process and do this all over again. I don't know how the applicant could have gone further into compliance of what the, what the rules and the guidelines say. I do appreciate, once again, Mr. Lenny's additions, because the first iteration was not particularly appealing. So I will be supporting the motion.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question of the appellant, and that is, are the houses, how near the setback, is there room to develop additional square footage, developable square footage in the side yard setbacks of these properties? Are they built setback to setback? Are they proposed setback to setback?
The back of the house?
No, the side.
This is a great exhibit. Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, there's not a whole lot of room to spread things out on the ground floor without pushing the houses much closer together, which...
Of course, they would be closer together, but they're just...
It'd be closer together on the ground floor.
You have a bit of space to expand.
On this particular house, we actually don't, we've got very little room. To the north of the house, the little green patch you're seeing, that's guest parking now, and that's the only place we have for guest parking. To the south of the house, we have maybe one or two feet. I mean, we're really talking about very marginal changes on this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, just to say that that, in terms of the whole subdivision, I think that there's, there is a bit more space that these houses could have expanded on the ground floor. We found in these, in these NPO, and all the neighborhood compatibility stuff, the ground floor square footage just isn't that big of a deal. It just, it has not been a problem with compatibility. And the second floors are constantly under siege. We've seen two of them in recent times. This is a third. And that one of the, at least as I understand it, SFB takes on stair stepping, wedding caking, whatever you call it, is part of the, as you're talking about downtown, going on second stories, those second stories get set back here and there to protect privacy and for other reasons. So that's, that's obviously the essence of what I was alluding to as a tool for lightening the load on the existing neighbors there.
So first, thank you all for the presentations. And the more I, I don't know, look at this and understand it, it seems to me that much of the issue really had to do with the lot subdivision, as opposed to the design of the house. And I'm curious that what, if the lot subdivision approval back in August was appealed to us, what this council would do. Because I could tell you, at least for me, I could go more in the direction that I heard from some of the neighbors about density and push together. But that didn't happen. So there wasn't an appeal about the lot division. And, you know, I remember, gosh, way back, this was, I was a council member, and there was, this was actually in the high fire area, so there were some other issues related to that. But there was a lot division by the reservoir. And I think they asked for five, and we actually granted them four. There were four, and we granted them three. It was four to three. Four, yeah, there were four lots proposed, and we said three. Part of it had to do with high fire areas, so that's a little different. But part of it had to do with how many houses do we think is appropriate for that size of a lot. And I think that those conversations, we'd have a very different type of conversation up here if it was a lot division appeal. So it's not. They got their subdivision. They're entitled to it, and now we're moving forward with these four different lots. So I have to agree with many of my colleagues that what's being proposed here, based on the rules that we have about single-family design and the neighborhood preservation ordinance, it fits. And so that's, as a question of fairness, and everything else that's been put on this lot constraints with the creek setback and so forth, I just don't see how I can go against the guidelines and the standards that have been put in place at this particular point for lot two. I will say, though, and some of the, the Plaza Rubio comparison came to my mind, too, before Mr. Goran mentioned it, that very different scenario, looking at Plaza Rubio, historic, literally, an historic neighborhood, overlooking the Rose Garden and the Mission. It's a streetscape. This is not that. I can see where they were thinking in terms of that would be a nice look to it, but that's a public view of four or five different properties. This is going down a private driveway, basically, from a public street. So very, very different angle and perspective there. I appreciate, I thought, Mr. Goran, your presentation at the beginning was actually quite excellent. And you focused on the facts, you focused on the issues at hand, the process of getting here, what the guidelines were. It was very convincing. I have to say, though, that the second part of your presentation was much more emotional, and I can sense the frustration that you felt. And I appreciate that there's frustration of going back and forth with the Single Family Design Board. But it kind of turned me off a little bit. And I only bring this up because there's still lot one, and there's still lot four. And the neighbors did not come officially to appeal this project. You asked the Single Family Design Board to deny it so that you could appeal it. Had they approved it, I'm sure the neighbors would have appealed it. We're going to be in a situation where I really don't want to see appeals of lot one and lot four. So there's going to be some work that needs to happen with the neighbors. They're sitting right here in the room. They're much more tuned to how this process works. They've been very engaged with the Single Family Design Review Board, and particularly with lot one, as it relates to privacy and good neighbor guidelines. And there is a section in the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance about good neighbor guidelines, especially with second stories, and how it looks into the neighbor area. So I know we're looking at lot two. I'm going to agree with the motion with this, but just as a sign of caution, of really being attentive to the neighborhood concerns, particularly with lot one moving forward. And that's just some advice from one of seven up here. Lot four may be a little different, especially with the view corridor, and you're really constrained there. But it would be, it would be a shame if we still have a contentious issue when lot one finally gets through its Single Family Design Review Board process. So with that, I think those are all my comments. And we do have a motion on the floor. Mr. Hart?
Just one last thing. I think your comments brought this to my mind, is that, yes, it is important to work with the neighborhood. And I think that they have tried to do that. And I think that the neighbors are going to try and work back and forth. But there's another part of all of this, which is, why are these homes so big? Why are they so dense? Because it's extremely expensive to develop properties in the city of Santa Barbara. And why is that? Partly, it's because of the land value and the charm of our community. But it's also part of our process, too. And it takes an enormous amount of time and financial resources to go through the city's process. And that absolutely adds to the cost of development. And so we are constantly faced with this conundrum about, you know, going the extra mile to work with the neighborhoods, make sure it's designed right. But that process itself costing money that makes the projects bigger than they might necessarily be. And I think that's something everybody has to pay some attention to.
Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So that is five one. Okay. Thank you very much. If you could take your conversations outside of council chambers, we do have a couple more items here up on the dais, which is council member committee assignment reports. Mr. Hart?
I just wanted to say that I had attended the State of the Schools breakfast by the Santa Barbara School District. It was a great event for them to talk about all their amazing work that they are doing with our youth, all kinds of new programs, introducing the Common Core curriculum to the schools, and making improvements to address the achievement gap with students. And then I also attended the Police and Fire Commission meeting, where they talked about some of the capital projects for the two different departments.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You got up early for that State of the Schools. I couldn't get my head off the pillow. I did attend the restorative court ceremony, and that was fabulous. It was such a celebration of all the different agencies that work with our restorative policing program, and help people address their problems and their issues, and get off the street, and into housing, or into sobriety programs. So I really, and you were there, Madam Mayor, we really congratulate those, the work of those good people. I also attended the Santa Barbara City College Task Force. The city of Santa Barbara is working with the City College about issues related to the residents and students, and student partying. And I think we're, I think we're getting somewhere. And I went. I'm not on the task force, but you didn't go and so on.
I couldn't make it. But thanks for being there.
I went. And we're getting somewhere, I think.
Great. Good. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Airport Commission met. They've got four buildings, World War II structures, that eventually is going to come to us to decide what to do with them, follow them under, keep one or two going or not. The general aviation folks would like to see them gone, so they have more room for parking out there. At the Waterfront Commission, it was a really interesting meeting. For the first time in years, there's space available for lease at Harbor Way, 500 square feet. Supposed to be, preference goes to so-called ocean-dependent operations, but it could get down to a pizza shop if nobody else comes forward. So that's, it's a really valuable area. It's going to be a Sterns, Sternsworth Christmas tree this year. They were particularly proud that the Harbor Patrol beat the Coast Guard rescuing on October 25th a sinking vessel, which in fact did sink. And they located it with beaker, some sort of beaker. I don't know how it worked. And they put out a fire on another boat. So it was pretty active down there these last month or so. And that's it.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Wednesday, the Infrastructure Subcommittee met, and my goodness, did the, did the staff led by Nina Johnson pull together an amazing summary of the, of the material that was gleaned from all of the various meetings that we had. And I understand we will have a council review of that at some point in January. But she brought, again, not she, they, the whole cumulative staff, brought together a host of financing, financial information about our infrastructure, as well as the, a summary of the questionnaires and so forth, that is really, really impressive. And I look forward to it coming to council. And then later that day, the Sustainability Subcommittee met as well, and had an update on the trash, the trash system, what the, help me with the...
Resource Recovery Park.
The Resource Recovery Park. Yes, which is coming along.
Okay. You mentioned all the other things I was at, so that's it for me, too. We have a couple of closed sessions, if you could read those.
Item 16, Conference with City Attorney Regarding Pending Litigation Title Joseph M. Hicks Versus the City of Santa Barbara et al., USDC Case Number CV139016, FMO RZX. And item 17, Conference with City Attorney Regarding Pending Litigation Title Camille Carter Versus the City of Santa Barbara et al., SBSC Case Number 1438672.
Thank you. And we'll be adjourning from closed session. I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We will not be here next week, so we'll be here in two weeks.